Okay. All right, well, are we thinking we could maybe get started here, folks? Soon as Cory gives me the.
Yep, I'm good. You're good to go.
Okay, so we're up and running. Do we have, um, if you folks would stand and face your flag, Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands on one nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
I was kind of trying to time this always in time with her.
Thank you. Here we go. Do we have any public comment today? Anyone there in the boardroom or any public comment?
No.
No, okay. That takes care of that. Do you all have a chance to look at the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve our agenda for today?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about today's agenda? We'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving today's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to the board minutes of February sixteenth. I do have one correction. If you look at page two, it's kind of an old English teacher correction. On page two, it says. Revenue fund to the Human Services Fund, F U N. I'm assuming that's supposed to be F U N D.
Spell check.
Right? In the second paragraph on page.
Spell check wouldn't have caught it. It's a good word.
That's the only.
Madam Chair, I move that the board minutes be approved as printed with your correction.
Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of approving the board minutes of February sixteenth with one little correction, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. I believe Phil, you're on the agenda next.
Morning. Phil Schmals, Meeker County Public Works Director. Two items for you this morning, or more, depending how we address them. But they're all related to the state's local road improvement program. It's state bond dollars, a grant program for construction. I put together just a brief presentation to walk you through some details about the program before we looked at the board action items. So the program was established in 2002. It's state bond funds. Every other year typically follows the state's bonding cycle. MINDOT administers it, they put the panel together to rate and select projects. In 2020, the state legislature put $75 million into this LRIP program. It's a competitive grant, so counties, cities, and townships are all competing against each other for that $75 million. The max grant is $1.25 million. This is for road construction. There's three targets in the LRIP grant. You have to hit one of these targets to be considered. One of them is for trunk highways. We can do work on MINDOT's roads. The other one is routes of regional significance. That's typically where townships and counties and cities are going to fall with their applications. And then rural safety projects. That's very similar to, you hear me talk about the H-SIP Highway Safety Improvement Program. That's a federal program. We address most of our safety needs through that. So the 2020 LRIP solicitation opened in December, closes tomorrow. Projects that you can put in can be for 2021, 22, or 23 construction. The need is to complete a funding application and demonstrate how your proposed project meets one of those targets that I showed on the previous slide. And any non-state aid cities and townships require a sponsorship of the county. And that's our second agenda item. Sponsorship, I'll get to what sponsorship means. So the applications are reviewed by MINDOT. First thing they'll do is look at eligibility. Do they meet one of those targets? And then they're scored in accordance with how well they meet one of those targets. And funding award is expected to come out and made. So the LRIP sponsorship, so non-state aid cities and townships. Basically, a city with less than 5,000 people is non-state aid. And then townships, they're all non-state aid. To be a sponsor, so the county to sponsor one of our cities or townships projects. Fiscal agent, that's, we're the intermediary for the money. That's the biggest piece. We also have to ensure that the project is developed and designed to meet the deadlines and the state aid standards that we have with with our roads. They'll have similar standards they need to meet. We communicate information with MINDOT and state aid. I think the state doesn't want to be dealing with so many different entities. That's why they ask the county to be a sponsor for the smaller entities. We'll assist with advertising, letting, and awarding the project. And we'll ensure that the project is properly supervised and inspected. It doesn't necessarily mean that the county's going to inspect the project. We may, the way our arrangement is, but you'll see in here, we have seven projects we're sponsoring. If they all are successful, the county's not going to be able to take that all on. And at that point, the townships or cities would have to rely on consultants. So the sponsorships requests that have come in. We've got Danielson Township, culvert replacement project, Darwin Township, a street rehabilitation. Ellsworth Township wants to pave gravel road. Kingston wants to rehabilitate an existing paved road, repave it basically. And then Litchfield Township has two applications close to the city of Litchfield. And then there's one city project sponsorship request for the city of Dassel. And it's on our CASA four. It's a programmed project, and they're looking for LRIP funds for a portion of their cost split. It's into the slides. Do you have a way to put up the RBA?
Quick question.
Yeah.
This is for projects 21, 22, 23.
Yes.
So if a township started a project in 22, don't finish it until 23, that's okay. It does not have to be completed within the.
Correct.
And then their reimbursement, I assume will be, let's say, their grant is for $750,000. But they only use $650,000. That's all they're going to get.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's a grant program, so they have to spend the funds before they can be reimbursed. So they'll be holding that, they'll have to float the cash.
Okay. They understand that?
They should.
Okay.
I've been educating as much as I can. There's been a lot of inner correspondence with townships mainly about this program in the last couple of months.
I had a question, Phil.
Yeah.
This is going to be a big project. This is the road number 14 that goes all the way from Highway 12 down beyond kind of Greenleaf. Number 18 down in there. The city of Darwin, is Burlington Northern going to be redoing their crossing right there in Darwin then too?
Not that I'm aware of. Railroads typically are on their own schedule. We won't combine that with our project unless they're interested in getting on board, but they won't react that quickly. I wouldn't expect them to. We are working with the city of Darwin to maybe expand our scope within the city as far as not just addressing the pavement, but maybe taking a look at the curb and gutter sidewalks, things of that nature.
Did you get an email about that? I got an email from somebody over there, and I'd lost it.
From the city?
Yeah. Have been working with the mayor. Did you get anything from Atkinson at all?
Atkinson.
I'll get ahold of you.
From Darwin Township? Yeah, he was looking at doing a project. I was receiving emails from two different supervisors in Darwin Township.
Right, that's why I was confused too.
And, yeah, I told them to talk to each other.
Okay, so you have communicated.
What I'm supporting is what I got from their board chair.
Okay, and that is?
We'll get to it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, that's fine, thank you.
Quick question too. Does the state usually do about $75 million per year? Or is this?
It's in the neighborhood, yeah. They've been pretty consistent, at least the last one was about $75, I think.
And what's the likelihood, I mean, is it maybe one of these projects, or is it not even that, of actually getting the grant?
Depends how many applications come in. My opinion, maybe one of the township or city projects will get funded. Because that $75 million is for all city, township, counties around the state. In the past, they've tried to kind of make it a third to the cities, a third to the townships, a third to the state. There's no formal cost splits listed, but they look at the applications, they score them, and then they try and have some kind of a regional distribution. So, I mean, the likelihood of all of those getting selected in Meeker County, it's not going to happen unless nobody else is applying for this. But what I'm hearing, talking to my colleagues and consultants and elsewhere, they've really been out there pushing this grant program this year. So I expect MINDOT to get inundated with requests.
Phil, in the AMC Legislative Conference, they had the, I was on the infrastructure portion. And the gentleman there spoke to this and said it's very highly competitive.
Yeah.
So.
And years ago, I'm going back maybe 10 years, it was more accessible. I think part of it was people didn't know about it. Now, it's being put out there a lot. I know the township, Minnesota Township Association, put it in their magazine or flyer that they send out. It was understated how difficult it might be to get the funds in that flyer. So it really, it got the townships excited, I think. So, good for them for applying, but I, yeah, I don't know. We'll see who applies around the state.
Well, if you don't apply, you know, it's.
If you don't apply, you don't get funded.
Yeah, I mean, true. You gotta try, so.
Mm-hmm. Well, Phil, as far as I'm seeing here, before you move on with your next slide presentation, would you like to have the board address this resolution for the county state aid Highway 14 project?
Yep, that's where I'll start. I was just going to touch on a couple of features of 14, and then we can take a look at the resolution for our county project. So the post LRIP application for CASA 14, it's a reclaim and pave project from the South County line up to US 12. Some enhancements, I guess I would call it, along the route will reclaim the existing pavement. Put back 14-foot wide pavement on each side of the center line rather than 12. Move the edge lines in, that'll improve shoulder maintenance. And then shift pavement, as far as we can, to one side of the road through the lakes to allow a little bit of offset traffic. To encourage pedestrians and other users of the road to try and use one side, and they'll have a little more space. And then we're going to put down the reflective pavement markings along with that, just to enhance all visibility of pavement markings, but mainly nighttime and wet conditions. I estimate it's about a $3 million project. It was in our five-year plan that we went over a few weeks ago. So I'm looking for 1.25 million of state bond funds through the LRIP program to help us get to a $3 million total.
And I see you have this one falling under as a route of regional significance.
Yes, route of regional significance. Some of the things I touched on, critical corridor connecting the city of Hutchinson or McLeod County to the city of Darwin and US Highway 12 in Meeker County. I cited some safety improvements. I'm not going to walk through this application, but if you're curious, it's in here. It's one of our highest-used roads in Meeker County, about 1,650 vehicles a day in 2019. Another piece here, you'll see the checkboxes that they're going to look at initially when they score these projects. 10-ton network, currently it's a 7-ton spring restricted road. It's not heavily built, so this project will bring it up to a 10-ton system.
Interesting, you said 1,650 per day going through those curves between Stella and Washington.
In 2019, yes.
Yeah.
And we do acknowledge the BNSF railway crossing in the city of Darwin. But that's not going to be part of our scope, to rebuild their crossing.
What's the total number of miles from 12 down to 18? Do we know?
I don't think it's in here enough to top my head. Eight or 10, something like that, but I know I'm not exactly right there.
Okay, and this project will be done in one year?
Correct.
Okay.
So essentially grinding up the existing pavement, removing a portion of it so we don't raise the road too much, and then placing new pavement.
Ground-in wet reflective lasts longer, it more reflective or?
Yep, it's a recessed pavement marking, so the reflective elements, the glass beads, that's what your headlights really pick up, especially when it's wet. They're recessed, so the plow don't scrape them off. And it's a different type of element we use when it's recessed. It's angular. It's not just a bunch of spherical beads. There's all kinds of different shapes. Better reflectivity, it costs more, so we won't use that unless we recess the pavement marking, because the plow will peel that right off.
So, explain to me the shoulder between the lakes that we've had so much conversation about, so that'll be wider on one side than the other?
That's what we're planning to do, swaps that center line, so our edge of road goes right to the basically edge of the little bit of gravel shoulder we do have on one side. And then we'll have a little bit of a widened pavement on the other side.
So that will encourage people to use that for walking by?
Yes, one side versus the other, and give them a little more space.
Do you know how much more space? Because I have a lot of interested parties that call me.
I'm thinking of two to four feet. It's not going to be a full eight-foot, 10-foot shoulder.
Anything in there?
It's something, but.
It would be an improvement, it's certainly not one.
That's what we can get without purchasing right away and expanding our footprint.
Okay.
There's our estimate we put together, if you're interested.
Does the safety aspect of it go into the scoring too? That if it's an improvement in safety, then?
I think they'll consider it. It's, we're not applying as a safety project, but that's why I include the safety enhancements as part of it, because they'll still consider that when they're scoring.
In looking at this, is this probably the number one project that'll score the highest? This one of all the ones?
Oh, this and the townships?
Yeah. Is it, or is that?
If you put them side by side, probably, but that's because of the level of use of our road.
Right.
That's why they try not to score the counties right alongside the townships, because it would be really hard for townships to compete.
Got you.
I did get a letter of support from McLeod County. It's not in here, but I have a letter of support from the city of Hutchinson as far as supporting the corridor improvement enhancement. And I expect to be receiving a letter of support from the city of Darwin today or tomorrow. I don't include that in my packet.
So you will be submitting this one?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll submit this to the state. And part of the requirements is the resolution of support from the Meeker County Board. That's what this is. Basically, supporting the project and the application for the LRIP funds.
So I'll move the resolution, the request for the LRIP funds for number 14.
Madam Chair, I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a resolution with a motion and a second to approve the county. Now, help me if I'm not wording this correctly. To approve a resolution to support the county state aid Highway number 14 project with funding for grant application. Did I word that correctly?
I think so.
I think so.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
We need to have a roll call. We need to have a roll call vote.
We need a roll call. Cory, would you help me with that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis.
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Very good. And Phil, you have another presentation for us.
Yeah, and I have a second item. This will be pertaining to the township and city, support, no, not support. Sponsorship resolutions associated with the same LRIP program. So as I stated, the townships and cities smaller than 5,000 people require sponsorship of the county. So there are seven projects associated with this. And my understanding is, I guess you guys can think about this as we walk through them briefly. We can do one vote to pass a sponsorship for all of them, or we can break them apart individually as you see fit.
Phil, if you go to the tab on the top left.
Okay. So the first one I'll just touch on briefly is for Danielson Township. They are proposing to do some culvert replacements and tree removal on their 210th Street. In green, that's their project proposal right there. The second one requested is from Darwin Township. They are looking to basically do some rehabilitation on an existing gravel road, is my understanding. They have some soft spots, difficult areas in there, and they want to make improvements with the surface. 268th Street. Then we have one from Ellsworth Township, 640th Street. They want to pave a gravel road. And some of you may remember, we did a project down here with State Park Road account funds to pave gravel up to this boat access three years ago, 2018. So they're looking to extend that pavement up to 198th. They have gravel hauling through the area, so there's some need to improve that section of road. It's gravel right now. It was actually reconstructed in 2017 to widen it out to fit pavement in the future, so. Then we have a Kingston Township application. It's a little confusing when you look at the numbers, 732nd, 350th, and 737th. But if you look at a map, it probably makes a little more sense. It's an existing paved road, looking to reclaim and replace that pavement. Litchfield Township has two projects. The math will probably mostly easily explain what they're looking at applying for. The red piece is existing pavement that they want to overlay. And the green piece is another portion of existing pavement that they want to make improvements on. And they're two separate applications because they would be looked at as two separate corridors. Turn, you can put in one application, two roads, and make a turn, but those are two separate movements of traffic, I guess, is how I would describe it.
Just curiosity, what are they using for, is that a route of regional significance, or what's their?
All of these are being applied for under the road of regional significance. So they have to justify in their application what makes that road regionally significant.
Okay.
And the last one I have here is the city of Dassel project. It's actually on our CASA four. The city is requesting funds to apply for a portion of their cost share on what you see in the blue here. That reconstruction is scheduled for 2022. In general, what we do with a city project like this, a state aid through the city, we pay for the center 24 feet of the road. City pays for any underground, anything outside the center 24, curb and gutter sidewalks. So they'll be looking for funds for items outside of the center 24 feet of the road. And that's it. So then, the action we would need is support for all the resolutions, or individually we could discuss them?
We should be allowed to.
How would the board like to address these? Would we like to take a resolution motion for one at a time, or as all seven of them at once?
Madam Chair, maybe Brandy, is there any special need that we need to do them individually, or can we? You good with all at once?
The only concern with doing them all together would be is if there's a no vote on one, they'd all fail. So, it'd be up to your discussion.
Why don't we do them one at a time and just?
Are you worried about somebody's going to vote?
No.
Then let's do one.
Okay.
Let's do one.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
I have a question for Phil.
No.
Let's say, if we do this all at once with seven projects under one resolution, is there any problem if one of the, one of the requests is denied? Would that goof up the opportunity for the rest of the township?
No, they'll be submitted separately. Even if the board passes at one resolution, each township and the city will receive their own signed resolution that they can submit individually.
And just to clarify, the board is still approving seven resolutions? It would just be in omnibus as one vote, rather than seven individual votes?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that the board approve all seven of the resolutions as presented by Phil.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have before us a resolution to approve all seven of the requests. Do I hear any discussion? No further discussion, we'll take a vote. And will Cory please call the roll call?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
The resolution passes. Anything else, Phil?
I just was, I could mention, I went to Acton Township's regular meeting yesterday morning to discuss township maintenance. Learned a few things, got a little knowledge. So it was good. I'm working, I'm getting back to township meetings now that COVID's lightening up. Gathering information, working on our township road maintenance agreement, so.
Do you want Commissioner to attend when you go to their township?
When they can, yeah.
So just let me know, I only have the one township.
And we did Darwin, so.
Yeah, so we're good for that one from when we did, okay. You're starting up again from?
Yep, I'm hitting the one.
I guess that was a year ago.
It was a year ago, almost, last summer.
Wow, okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Please, please let me know if you're going to.
I'm at the event, it was Sunday, I saw when I went out there, Walmart, there was a lot of cars. It's heavy snow.
Yeah.
Water.
Like most spring events.
Yeah.
You got missing people in the road, they're soft.
Oh man, my guy came and did mine and kind of dug out my yard a little, it's soft.
As I'm looking at the agenda, it says that we need to recess as county board and reconvene as county ditch authority. Should we do that right now? We will take a recess, and the time is 10:03?
It's not a recess.
I believe we need a vote for that, right? Yeah, we need a vote to adjourn the county board.
I'll make.
Well, we're recessing, not adjourning, because we're going to come back.
So we don't need a motion.
Julie can call it.
You just need, okay.
Maybe if we just make a documentation that we've taken a recess from county board at 10:04, 10:03, 10:04. And we will reconvene after we hear them from John. That's on the agenda. John, are you there?
I am here. Good morning, everyone. John Condon, Meeker County Ditch Inspector. Meeting a couple of you for the first time. I bring for you, to you this morning, approval for a quote that I received for tile repair on County Ditch 32. During a recent inspection with the landowner out there, he had four holes in his field out there. One I probably could drive my side-by-side into. So it was pretty large, substantial. It was along the whole line, the stretch we're looking to replace. Currently, it's a 14-inch concrete tile. We're looking to replace it with a 15-inch dual-wall plastic perforated. Reasoning for the dual-wall plastic, it's more economical, it's easier to install, longer lifespan. We're looking to replace approximately 1,420 feet of tile. And we're also planning to add a 8-inch surface intake on the east side of 690th. Um, and we're also planning to add a eight-inch surface intake on the east side of six hundred and ninetyth Avenue. Um, just some past reference here, both upstream and downstream of this section have already been replaced with fifteen inch dual-wall plastic within the last fifteen, twenty years. Um, see if I can figure this out here. Nope. Um. So I recruit, re- sent out for an R F Q to seven different contractors, I had received six quotes, was, which is more than normal, usually I get three or four at most. Um, the lowest quote submitted was by Whitcomb Farm Drainage for the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, I did attach a summary of the quotes. Um, the benefit amount for the entire ditch system is five thousand nine and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents, which was established back in nineteen twelve. So the dollar value back then was um, a lot less versus now. Um, and some of you don't know what the benefit value is, is viewers at the time, like when the ditch was established. His viewers went out and they assessed, you know, this property receives this percentage of the benefit from the ditch, this property receives this percentage. Um, and on this particular ditch system, it's essentially almost three landowners that pay for, I would say, close to ninety percent of it. Um, so I had checked with our drainage attorney, and he said, under uh, Minnesota State Statute one oh three E. Dot seven oh five subdivision six, by motion of the board, the county can go over the cost of the benefit amount, as long as the cost is spread out over multiple years. Um, given it's a cost is, I think, under a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which we're not even close. Um, he only recommended doing that, um, if there wasn't going to be multiple different phases to the project, and then, as of right now, we do not anticipate. More work than this, you know, something may came up, but as of right now, we don't anticipate anything, so this is, instead of trying to do a redetermination. Um, is why we're trying to proceed to go forward without doing that.
Are you, can I, can I ask?
Any.
So, are you saying then that this repair will be split among three landowners?
For the most part, it'll be put on the ditch system, but those three landowners pay a po- approximately ninety percent of the benefits on that ditch.
So is it unusual not to have it assessed since nineteen twelve, or is that?
I had looked before I had brought everything to the board here, and doing a redetermination will not really change the benefit amount much. Basically, those three landowners.
And you, you could end up spending in a case where those fifteen thousand isn't a signic- yeah. If it was a couple hundred thousand dollar project, then you'd do a redetermination because.
So they.
But cost effectively right now to do a redetermination, that adds to the fifteen thousand.
So how many land, so can they come back and say, we don't, we want a redetermination, or?
I had already had discussions with.
So they know, okay.
They're, they're in the loop of what's going on, they, you know, if, they, if we felt that it was gonna pull a lot more people into it, and their percentages was, you know, be altered a bit.
I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, I just.
No, but, no, I had looked into that prior, you know, that was a consideration, but it wasn't really gonna change the percentages, it was mainly gonna change the dollar amount. Um, I didn't feel like having them spend twenty-five to fifty thousand to just increase the dollar amount.
Is that how much it costs for reassessment? Well, it does.
Yeah.
And the landowners have to pay for that also.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, the size and scope of project determines.
Yep.
Thank you.
And if he has a hole that large out in that field, he's, these landowners gotta be looking to get that repaired.
Yeah, yeah, he's, right now, he's actually farming around him.
Yeah.
Driving around him right now.
I'm always curious when I look at quotes, and the highest one is thirty-eight thousand, and the, the cheapest one is half of that, I'm wondering, what happened? Is it doing, I mean, just because they're not?
Don't wanna do it.
They just wanna.
If you're gonna do it.
Make a lot of money.
Yeah.
I know, I know, like Whitcom's, I mean, tile work is their bread and butter, that's their, one of their main things they do. Um, I was not surprised they were a little bit.
Yeah, but that's quite a spread.
Yeah, I know it is.
Interesting.
Is that, is this system, for those fourteen hundred feet, where you repair that, is that pretty well, uh, repair or just not bring it up? To current standards?
Easy.
I mean, is there, what I'm getting at, is there a lot more old cement tile further up, up the tile line that are gonna cause problem down?
Done already, and then with doing this, it would be the downstream, I would say, half of the system would be replaced to do a wall plastic, where it would just be the upstream half that hasn't been, so.
Alright.
Most significant amount.
Yeah, yep, alright.
And the downstream half is relatively flat compared to, you get upstream of there.
That's why they blow, they blow out.
Yep.
Alright.
So the existing intake will stay, and we're gonna add the one on six hundred and ninetieth Avenue.
Yep, yeah, a lot of water, just elevation, surface water elevation, it, everything just flows to that point. Um, the farmer suggested it, adding a eight-inch intake, I think was like a hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh.
I mean, they already got the whole delegates to just put a T in there and put intake up, was pretty minimal. There's a lot of benefit to adding that in there.
Good, uh, good outlet? I mean, at the end of the tile, so we?
That's already been replaced.
Okay.
The outlet end has already been replaced.
But I mean, it's open tile, I mean, we're not forced outlet. I mean, so, cuz that's what causes back pressure and blowing out tile, or, you know, you know where I'm going, I mean, the.
Yeah.
End of the pipe is open, is.
Yeah, the end of the pipe is open, yep.
Okay.
That was replaced, I think I looked in the records, only like ten or twelve years ago.
Okay.
Where, where this will be outletting into going to the open ditch.
Yeah.
That was just like about ten, twelve years ago.
Okay, so, that's good.
Are all affected property owners on board with this, John?
I've talked with the one mainland owner that went out there, he's been talking with his two other neighbors, he knows them well. Uh, last, I talked with him last week, um, sounds like everyone was on board. They know it needs to be replaced, that, I mean, if they want it to work, it doesn't help them any that it's not functioning. And they were aware.
Are there any lake associ- are there any lake associations in, involved with this, or is it strictly field tile?
It's field tile.
Okay.
There any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve County Ditch thirty-two tile replacement, uh, project, and award it to Whitcomb Farm, uh, Whitcomb Farm Drainage.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that, uh, motion.
Very good, we have a motion before us to, um, take care of the county ditch number thirty-two and award the contract to Whitcom's. Do we, uh, let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair, because you're remote, we do need to do all of our votes as roll calls.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
And I'd like to.
Because we did not do that for the agenda or the minutes, but for the remainder of these issues, it must be all roll call?
Yeah, because under thirteen D O two one, you are, um, currently appearing remotely, because we're under a health pandemic, and there's been an emergency declared. And so, in order for you to appear remotely and participate, you have to, um, do it by roll call.
So the resolutions and the motions, alright, well, before us, we have a motion, we will be taking a roll call vote on the, uh, County Ditch number thirty-two. All those, uh, I'd like to have Cory, if you, if you would handle that for all of us, please.
Sure, uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Anything else, John?
No, that's it for now.
Okay, I would like to adjourn the County Ditch Authority and reconvene now as cor- county board meeting, and I have ten fourteen as the time.
Madam Chair, you're on Florida time, it's nine fourteen here.
Don't tell.
I'd be too late for that.
Cory, beat me on my toes here. Alright, that was John. Now, as we reconvene at whatever time it is, then, we hear from Kurt, is Kurt there with us today?
Yes, Kurt Nicole, Nicole Goldfarb. Good morning, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Good. We'll jump into the financials.
So in November, we saw an operating net loss of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, December, we saw operating net income of three hundred and seventeen thousand. And year-to-date, uh, where we landed with twenty twenty was an operating net loss of three point one million. Um, thank you. So overall, throughout the year of twenty twenty, we did receive, uh, nine million dollars of potentially forgivable funds. And we are working through those right now as how to recognize and release them. Um, this was different funds through federal, state, um, anything through, uh, some of the county cares act that we received. Uh, and we also had some F B A funds in there as well. So, when you look at the December year-to-date, uh, statement of revenue and expenses, you will see that we are, we have a non-operating line. Showing approximately six million dollars that's being, uh, released from those forgivable funds. And, uh, right now, we are working pretty closely with our auditors, uh, to ensure that we are appropriately forgiving those, and that we've spent them on the right categories.
Excuse, uh, is there a way, next time, to get these financials up on the screen for the public? I think it would be nice for them, with our new technology, to be able to do that. You don't have to do it today, Andrew, maybe.
It's happening though.
Me then, leave it to me.
And that, in those rules of forgivable, changes all the time.
I hear now you might have to pay state income tax on the P P P.
You may, um, and they're talking about us being a critical access hospital, that we get cost-based reimbursement. That, um, if it's recognized on the costs, on the cost report, then we can't recognize it as a grant, and would have to pay that back.
Oh wow, they're changing the rules all the time right now.
Rules all the time.
They're still making.
Thank you, Andrew.
And they're still printing money.
Yeah.
Lots, and lots of it, you know.
Questions on the financials?
I have a couple of, I have a couple of questions. If you're able to see on the screen, I'm looking at my packet that I received, uh, it's called The Hospital Matters, I'm on page three. The November statement. There's a little line that says clinic, east and west, and then there are three columns. Under actual, it's seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, under budget, there's nothing, under last year, there's nothing.
Yes.
I'm curious, why, why is there a nothing there?
Because, um, as of, uh, January is the only time that we actually took over the clinics. Um, before that, we weren't, uh, operators of the clinic. And when we did the budget, the budget was done and approved by the board prior to the deal being, um, negotiated with, um, Centra Care.
Okay, I, I was thinking that it had to do with the buyout and the Centra Care issue, because on page four, it was the same, the same deal. And then if you go to page seven, under the December report, December on page seven, it says clinic, east-west. And then there was this goofy hashtag D I V ten exclamation mark, I was wondering if that was just a typo, or if that meant something?
No, that's just, uh, i- it's an error when it's generated in Excel, it, we, it looks like it didn't get updated. But it's just saying that, um, that variance didn't have anything to divide by in the budget, and, and so it created an error.
And also, not to stick my nose in this, but, you know, COVID has changed a lot of things, so we had a lot of plans when we took over, good plans, still good plans, when we took over the clinic. And like everything else, and you can probably speak to this, um, both of you, tho- those things all changed when COVID happened, so.
Yes.
Any, uh, anything we thought was gonna happen, probably didn't, so.
Everything that we thought was to happen, uh, i- it didn't. Um, we took over the clinics, um, basically January.
End of January.
End of January, uh, we went epic, live epic with a new electronic medical record, February first, and then COVID hit in March. So usually, in most organizations our size, you do one of those a year.
Exactly.
Uh, we did three, and.
Besides the rural health clinic thing that we were working on.
Got surveyed for a rural health clinic, um, so, um, you know, back in, uh, November, December, we got surveyed for a rural health clinic, which is. Good from a cost report and from a reimbursement standpoint, um, so we will be billing out as that, so. Um, it's been a unique year, I think, um, you know, the commissioners that were on, probably, uh, March when we came, we did a forecast. I think our forecast at the time was eleven or nine million plus.
I remember figures, some, someone's like, well, it could be up to thirteen, so we've done, I think, very well.
Yep, our projections when we were, uh, doing surgeries were showing a very significant loss, which is, uh, on a positive note, that we've, we've been able to continue surgery.
And how many months were we without any surgeries at all? We weren't.
We're probably close to three months, um.
Where we weren't doing any outpatient or anything?
Outpatient in clinic, and I can tell you right now, if you look at our clinic numbers, um, and you look at, um, where we're at, um, rehab and everything, we're still not. Back to pre-COVID, um, people are still.
I think the vaccinations are the only thing that's gonna probably fix some of that, for good, so.
Um, if you, no other questions on the financials, I'd like to give you a little update on our vaccine clinics that we're doing. Um, so, um, our vaccine clinics, uh, to kind of put it in perspective, um, our first, um, a- allocation that was, um, given to us for the public. Came, well, it came about four weeks ago, on a Friday evening at six P M. Um, basically indicated that you may get seven hundred doses on Tuesday or Wednesday. Um, and you have, uh, seventy-two hours to get them in people's arms. Um, and, um, we were, uh, surprised, the coalition was surprised that we got that many. Um, but we did pull it off, uh, I mean, we did, uh, with Cornerstone Church, uh, as a location, we did seven hundred vaccines in less than seventy-two hours. Um, those second rounds are coming tomorrow, so we'll do the second round of the seven hundred tomorrow, back to, uh, uh, Cornerstone, Friday afternoon, and then all day Thursday, Friday. So, so far, um, for, you know, community, we did one thousand one hundred and seventy-four first doses. We've done one hundred and seventy-four second doses, and tomorrow we'll start, uh, additional seven hundred of second doses.
And those hundred, that second dose that's done, that's employees, staff, et cetera, frontline?
Um, yes.
And this, and not to interrupt you, but I'm gonna give you kudos again, I heard such great things about the Cornerstone Clinic, and I think I passed that on to this board before, but I'm still hearing. And they did it, and got ready for it in three days, so, you know, you did it.
So staff has been doing a great job, and this is above, you know, everyday operations, and, you know, and unlimited resources, so everybody pulls together and. Um, and it's a, it's a community service, cuz, um, we, we felt like if they can go elsewhere and not. Get billed for it, we weren't going to bill, but, um, to do seven hundred shots in seventy-two hours takes a lot of resources, um, so.
You gave us a figure that, at the last board, meaning what it cost for labor, what was that?
When we were doing it in-house in the hospital, uh, it was running fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars an hour, uh, now that was on a smaller scale than what we're running at, uh, Cornerstone.
Um, we did open up, um, when we started doing hundred, two hundred, we brought that back in, in, uh, the hospital, we were able to do that in our basement. We did reach out to our volunteers, and we had overwhelming, um, um, response that they would like to help, and, uh, so that has allowed us to shrink our resources. And use volunteers, um, that was part of, uh, uh, volunteer, and, uh, I can tell you that that went great, even at the hospital.
It was, uh, it was one of the coldest days of the year, and, uh, our CEO was sitting outside all bundled up greeting people, and. People are coming down going, who is that guy, he's really nice, like, oh, that's our CEO, but people were talking, I think I mentioned. But people were talking, I think I mentioned this, the elderly especially about, some of them almost in tears because they knew they were getting a vaccination and hadn't seen their grandchildren for a year and would be able to see them. So I'm willing to work one of those anytime. It was fun and very well organized, I gotta tell them.
Yeah, Anne Lee and Jane have probably been the two key on organizing this. They've done a great job and staff has, they, they've just done a fantastic job. So it's been a privilege to be able to provide that vaccine to our communities.
Are we hearing anymore? I know you had did some last week, I think. Some of my staff was invited.
Yeah, we did a hundred last week. This week, we got the seven hundreds. We didn't get any other first doses. We're anticipating hopefully the week after that we will. Our, our vaccine clinics on Fridays, one of our slower times on outpatient basis. So then what we're doing right now, we call it a closed pod, is we're taking individuals who is our clinic patients that are sixty-five and older and we're calling them. And so we're calling them and putting them on the list. So we are putting resources in. We're not just putting it on the web. We are actually calling our patients and getting them scheduled time. And with that, then we work with CCT for any transportation. So we have a seamless transition there. Once we do that, of sixty-five and older, our, our patients who want it, then we'll open it up to the public.
Are you getting more notice on when you're gonna get vaccines? You're not getting?
Friday, Friday afternoon.
So are you getting the same kind all the time?
Uh, no, one time we got two hundred. Last week we got a hundred.
How about the brand?
Moderna.
It's always Moderna?
Yep, so far.
Cause now Johnson &amp; Johnson has got some.
Johnson &amp; Johnson, their initial allocation is not that much, hopefully though.
I heard in the news this morning that Minnesota was slated to get several thousand, like in the hundred thousand of the new Johnson &amp; Johnson. So there's a good chance.
Good chance.
That you'll get a short notice call.
Yep, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
I think to CCT, you mentioned them. I think they got the drivers their first vaccination, Public Health did, I believe, a week or so ago.
Yeah, and they've been great. Those drivers have been on the ball and helping out. And they've been appreciative because it, you know, the more that we give people vaccine, more, you know, the safer they are, they feel too. So, but it's been rewarding. I mean, the, the, the patients are coming in for that. They are so appreciative that they can have it done here.
And to bill Medicare or insurance isn't worth the time.
No.
Cause I'm hearing like at a Prime West meeting, other hospitals are not charging either.
No, you're probably, you, you can bill probably twenty-six bucks for the administration fee. You'll get maybe ten if it costs you thirty to bill it. So, um, it's, it's just not worth it.
The long run, it's gonna be worth it 'cause we're gonna get back to normal. So I, and I've said this before, but pass on our appreciation to the staff. They've done a great job.
Yes, staff.
So have you guys.
It's been a, been a tough year for them, but they've done a great job.
Question, you said you're calling your current patients now that are sixty-five and older. Are you also reaching out to those that are sixty-five and older that are in the county?
Not yet.
I mean, wouldn't that be a potential to get more customers if you will?
It will. So our goal is once we do our closed pod, we can control that. And, and once we get our patients, you know, taken care of, then we will open it up to, to the public to wider spread. The problem with that is logistics, is once you do that, we haven't even advertised on the state health department because you get people traveling from cities all over the place calling you, trying to get a vaccine, and you kind of limit your, you know, the, your communities you're trying to serve. So once we get to that, we have to try to figure out logistics on how do we take care of Meeker County residents. So we'll, working on that and we'll figure that out.
That's what I meant. I meant more of the, the elderly of Meeker County. I mean, would be the next pod or whatever you would.
Yeah, um, yeah, we'll open up sixty-five and older for the population. But you'd be surprised how many people are calling everywhere and trying to get it. And our thing is we're limited. We wanna try to take care of our Meeker County residents first. We gotta figure out how to do that and, you know, ask for, you know, probably ID or zip code or something, but.
They're traveling. I know people that have gone to Mankato.
Hundreds of miles to, to try to get on.
I, that's why I think this is a good idea because otherwise it's kind of mass chaos.
It is.
So are, are you, Minnesota has the vaccine connector, I believe it is. Are you?
We're part of that, but we don't, we don't advertise on that yet just because of our closed pod. So we have the option of being able to be part of that. We chose not to because we chose to try to take care of, you know, the patients first. Cause that's, people will look at that and that's where they start to drive and they'll drive hundreds of miles for it. And we're just trying to, trying to figure out how we can take care of Meeker County.
Makes sense.
Cause it's limited.
Through the CARES Act, we approved purchasing a couple of those mobile disinfectant.
Yep.
Has, have you been able to use them and have they, I mean, how have they worked and?
Been working great. We've been able to use them, you know, and part of it to get ready for the vaccine clinic. We did take all of our furniture out of our rooms. We put them back in, all but our negative pressure rooms because we have those machines. We were able, cause we're able to disinfect them with those machines. So we're using both those in, inpatient and we use it in ROR on a daily basis.
Yeah, guys, just wanted to follow up and see how that's been working out.
Yeah, they've been really good too. Yeah, thank you.
So right now, basically you're, you're not getting enough vaccinations in that. You got plenty of arms right now to find home for, but in time, you'll get more doses and that'll be a little more.
We, we, uh, we, last week, while we were doing our hundred, we got notice, our pharmacist got notice that we are getting a seven hundred more additional doses this week. And we, and from the state, which seemed to come above and beyond the seven hundred second doses. So we were thinking is how are we going to do fourteen hundred this week? And I had a lot of staff members say, I don't know if we can do that. And I said, we'll do it. Well, then it was a miscommunication, the state, that wasn't the first doses. They were just saying we're getting the seven hundred second doses, which we already did. But we were already planning on, can we do fourteen hundred? I'm like, we're all ready to be set up. I think we can get it done, so.
Kurt, a question, do you think, and this is only asking for your opinion on this, because there's different levels of percentage of protection now. I believe the Johnson &amp; Johnson is a sixty-five percent. Are you, do you think you're gonna have folks who are gonna say, well, which vaccine do I have an option of?
I think you're going to. I think, you know, I think that the Moderna and the Pfizer is coming in with a little bit more higher, you know, effectiveness. I think the one thing, you know, that with Johnson &amp; Johnson is, I think they'll come out with another, you know, another shot that's helped boost that. But I think if you look at all the research, even from a Johnson, from Pfizer and Moderna on the first shot, the effectiveness of that, just to, you know, keep people, you know, not as sick is very high. So I think, you know, we will still can encourage, if that's the only one we have, we'll encourage people to do it because it's better than nothing.
Have you seen a lot of side effects?
You know, other than sore arms, that's been a key. But maybe one or two that, you know, was a little bit, you know, in the higher range of a side effect.
Do we have any hospitalizations from it or any?
No, not that, no.
I was actually told by a nurse that if you do get a little sick after that second shot, that's a good thing because your body is recognizing something there that is, doesn't belong. So it's not all bad to get a little, little sick after that second shot.
Yeah, what we hear is usually the second day after the second shot, people feel like they've just been kind of hit by a truck, you know, in terms of just wiped out for probably about eight hours.
Yeah.
You know, and then they're right back, so. Other questions?
I'd just like to echo what Beth said. I just think it's fantastic the way you have pushed this on short notice and the things that I've heard, I haven't heard a single negative about that operation whatsoever. So I think your staff is great.
Staff has done a fantastic job. I think Anne and Jane have, they've done a, a great job. And like you said, if we were to get the seven hundred, both Jane and I looked at each other kind of going, okay, it's a good challenge. We can get it on, you know, but.
You would've been working late into the evening probably.
Yeah, I mean, our goal is, how much they ever offer us is we're to take it all because people are asking for it and we'll figure it out for them, but we won't, we won't deny a vaccine. Other questions?
Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was a good report. I don't believe there was any action required with the Hospital Matters report. So then we move on to Ariana.
Hi.
Hi.
Let's see here.
There she is.
Did you guys see me and Jimmy okay?
Yes.
Yes. So before we get to the AIS contract and the request for a decontamination unit, I wanted to give you guys just a quick overview of how the AIS program is funded, history of our spending and kind of why we're at where we're at. Am I good to start?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so how we function is that we are funded by, solely by state AIS prevention aid. And so in twenty fourteen, the state of Minnesota passed a county tax bill and that secured ten million dollars for Minnesota counties each year for AIS prevention. The subdivision of our state statute, which kind of dictates how we use these funds, required the county board to pass a resolution. So in twenty fourteen, they did that. And in twenty fifteen, we had an advisory committee for AIS matters in the county set up. Part of that subdivision is that we remain eligible for funding the following fiscal year by submitting a report about, well, a report regarding our spending for the current year and then our plans for future years. So the last one we submitted was in December of twenty twenty. And the county board approved that and that was submitted to the state. That went over our past years, current years and future years, plans around spending, prevention, and then any kind of major highlights, I would say. And so if you guys are ever wondering kind of what we've done throughout the years and how things have moved outside of what I shared with you today, that's a great reference. But that plan is utilized by the committee as kind of a reference point and then also for us to review and revise accordingly year to year. And so typically that will reflect our plans for the year that we're in. And that's posted on the AIS county webpage. The, um, so the AIS committee, their input is weighed pretty heavily. And so the, this next slide on funding, I'm gonna run you guys through kind of our, our past years so you can see why you have what you have before you today. In twenty fourteen, when we first got set up, you can see there's a very small amount of spending that occurred and that's because we got our funding later in the year. And we did partner with Crowe. We started an initiative pilot for some community outreach and continued that in twenty fifteen. Put some ads in the local paper and actually contracted with Crowe unofficially, so to speak. And then got some signage placed up at our local lakes that were infested with Eurasian milk oil, zebra mussels, et cetera, and gave out a handful of community grants for treatments. We continued this in twenty sixteen and brought Crowe on as a contractor. That's where you see about a third to half of our costs between twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen. And they really helped with program administration at the time. Part of where we shift even further into utilizing the aid that we receive every year, which again is strictly for AIS, was our county-wide inspection program that was contracted with a service provider, Bishop AIS. In twenty seventeen, we covered a handful of lakes in the county. And that did include us buying supplies for them, stewarding the treatment of Little Mud Lake, handing out a few more grants than the previous year. And so you can see the spending at the end of twenty seventeen left us with about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unused aid for AIS prevention. And that's aid that's not going to the benefit of the community members. It's just sitting in account. This worked in our favor because it let us kind of adapt later on when we saw more infestations arise, especially in this last year, as you'll see. We, at the time, a lot of our outreach, I would also stress, was around informative education. This was not something, there, there wasn't anything else really out on the market other than let's inform people, let's get them aware and their behaviors will change. Now we know that it's much more effective to give people some context around the behaviors we're asking them to take on as far as cultural or community values and then also by addressing whatever barriers they have to those actions. And so that's what we're kind of moving towards in twenty twenty-one. In twenty eighteen, we continued this inspection program. It was expanded with water shoe lakes. And we did continue with our promotional items and giveaways, kind of the effort to raise awareness in the community and with people at the launch. This is not something that we are doing anymore. We have enough in inventory and we didn't think it was a wise way to be spending our funds, especially since we're still implementing some of that barrier reduction and working on getting commitments from our community members. So in twenty eighteen, the previous administrator for the program brought the county board request for this position. And so I came on in twenty nineteen. And you can see the spending's kind of already set up in twenty nineteen. So the inspection program and program are already rolling. And I was asked to do a four to five year projection of where we would see the program go in the future. Worst case scenario, if we had a couple inspections come up, or not inspections, infestations come up and if we saw a greater reduction in the aid that we were receiving. So we did this and I brought a handful of items to the committee for discussion for twenty twenty planning. And so we addressed those in twenty twenty. And this identified gaps in our monitoring and our prevention efforts to make sure that if we had unaddressed risk pathways, we got those basically addressed as soon as possible. And as they fit in with our community, some risk pathways are a little less concerned here than they might be in the Twin Cities or in other states. But we did establish a new infestation response fund and that's a budget line item in our budget that was approved in twenty nineteen, or twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And so as part of that planning, I really did stress the pound of, or ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So we did discuss ECON units and herbicide treatment. And in twenty twenty, we, essentially we're still aligned with what was planned to address those barriers and to address our risk pathways. But we had partnered with the U of M and so part of the spending increase that you see last year was from our inspection program and our grants. But that allowed us to only have a small percentage of an increase in our inspection costs. And we got quite a bit more coverage. At the end of the year, we found out that Lake Minnebell was infested with zebra mussels. The committee and myself discussed plans for a decontamination unit. This is something that's been discussed and ongoing conversation since twenty nineteen. Since it did fit into our development projections for the program, we decided that leaving lakes uncovered was just too great of a risk pathway and we budgeted for level two inspectors. That's where you see the cost difference. If anybody looked at kind of what we budgeted in twenty twenty for inspections versus this year, it's just the cost for a level two inspector essentially. So at the end of the year, twenty twenty, we have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserves. And this is unutilized aid, which again is just for AIS efforts. And so this year, we are revising our three to four, three to four year projections. And that's gonna be updated in our twenty twenty-two plan. The community has invested a lot of money into these lakes, a lot of time into these lakes. And so that our community members aren't putting their hard-earned dollars into this work and not seeing that map by us, we wanna make sure that we're pushing for further investment into the services that we're providing. So some key things we're doing outside of what you're gonna see today is our. is our ready response to new infestations. So this includes us partnering with McAl to provide them with a pointers program. Um, this is going to give them tools, best practices, guides, and then also our, um, updated flow charts for our response plan. This also includes us stewarding the responsible herbicide use initiative. And so this is something that was discussed in 2019 and, um, discussed extensively amongst the committee in 2020. And we decided to move forward with that so that our community members who have been paying for, um, you know, AIS treatments for years and not seeing any kind of an improvement can kind of help, get some help from the county, try something new. And, uh, we're really excited for that. We are also addressing tool stations because a lot of folks either are not able to clean their boats adequately. Um, and if we don't have inspectors there in the late hours or early hours of the morning, we want something available um, so that folks can do what they know is best, uh, and help them protect their own lakes. Now, um, we want to make sure that when we're talking about the AIS inspection contract, that we keep in mind these funds that are set aside, um, really do us more good when they're being put to use for prevention efforts and inspection programs are kind of that first line of defense. These funds, um, being utilized is, is protection essentially. If we don't use them, we're leaving our community members basically to pay for these services themselves or not have them done. Um, are there any questions before we move right into the inspection contract? Okay, uh, so the AIS inspection, uh, program put out a request for proposals and, um, this was open until February 1st. We had three service providers that were contacted. Those are really the only service providers that provide AIS inspections in the area. And, um, one of them that we would have contacted from previous years did decide to discontinue their, um, inspection program services, so to speak, because they were no longer interested in contracting those. And then one of our providers that we contracted with would already had their platefuls, so they did not submit a proposal. And we got a proposal from, uh, Bishop AIS and we contracted with them in 2017 and 2019. And then we also got a proposal from waterfront restoration and they were contracted in 2020. So they, for a second time, did submit a proposal that was a bit more competitive um, and did provide us with more flexibility, training, supplies, and ultimately allowed us to staff our lakes with more hours for the season. We did ask for best value proposals because we wanted to make sure we weren't just going by the lowest cost or the greatest number of hours. So, um, sorry, I don't know why the formatting on this is all funny, but, uh, essentially we're able to staff about 15 lakes this season with, uh, full coverage or adaptive coverage. Uh, adaptive coverage is essentially when a lake isn't utilized for a whole portion of the season, we're not going to pay to staff it. Doesn't make sense? We'll move where we need it. Uh, Bishop AIS, if we went with their proposal, we could get 5,100 hours or so. Um, about 500 hours in decon, which is a level two. Um, in order to operate a decontamination unit, you have to have a level one and a level two inspector staffed at all times. In order for us to shift accordingly, like I mentioned earlier, for us to adaptively monitor these lakes and to not staff where people are not needed, we need to do schedule changes um, incrementally throughout the season. This is something that would cost us about $95 with Bishop. There's no cost of waterfront. And we're able to cover a few more lakes with our rovers and get about 500 hours more of level one inspections. Um, and for context, that, context, that's about one whole lake for the entire season, right, if it's not a coverage. And we're still staffing a decontamination unit. Um, some of the best value considerations I would, I would really point out for key considerations that our committee weighed heavily were the fact that we had a greater number of inspections in 2020. We think this was likely due to people wanting to be out with the pandemic. Um, but we also received more, I would say, uh, flexibility in the way of the, of responding to the pandemic. We were able to get out in time for fishing opener and there was no delays with that. We also saw that we had more violations. I wouldn't say that this is expected even with the increase that we had. And so that makes me, um, suspect that maybe our ins- inspections have been a bit more effective than in previous years. So the board did vote to, or the committee did vote to support forwarding the contract to waterfront restoration. Um, considering that fluidity, the cost difference, the number of hours we can receive. But also because we can pay our inspectors a bit more. So it's more than a dollar an hour difference, um, with the contractor that we selected and 500 more hours that we're able to staff and provide as income. Okay, um, do you have any questions on the inspection program before I move to the decontamination unit?
I would have one, Ariana. Uh, I was just curious. I was hearing there are some complaints with waterfront, uh, versus Bishop at the landings and some of the inspection sites. Has that been addressed or has there been any, I mean, can you give me some background on that a little bit?
Yes, thank you for asking because I think that's important to have noted on here. So, um, we did receive a letter, the, the county commissioners did receive a letter this year and it was from an individual who did not work with waterfront restoration in 2020. Um, and the committee did discuss their feedback, um, pretty extensively. But after discussing it and kind of weighing our experience as a county and then my experience with coordinating with them and the feedback that I got from community members and inspectors one-on-one, um, I did not feel like it was reflective of really the company's reputation or their internal operations. The main complaint was just that this person felt like they were disorganized and top-heavy. Um, frankly, you know, the, the services that were provided from Bishop in previous years, we may have not received as many complaints on, from, directly from inspectors, but I received more complaints from community members regarding the inspection program in 2019 than I did in 2020. Um, and, yeah, I mean, granted, those were few. Uh, one of the key things I would, I would really stress is that, you know, this is not from someone that worked directly with the commi- with the company. The company has their own internal checks and I addressed kind of that concern with them when we received the letter and then also my concerns with them throughout the season. And those were always very promptly responded to. Um, the committees, the, the AIS committee's standing was essentially that it didn't make sense to deny the county of uh, better quality services for, um, you know, a previous contractor because of one letter and one complaint and then also provide less services because of that. The, the other consideration is just that, you know, um, ah, I, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. But essentially, I, yeah, we did, we have addressed it. I, I'm not worried about it. The committee is not worried about it. Um, we had more compliance with Minnesota DNR this year. We didn't double up. When we were with a previous, uh, is inspection company, you know, we may have not received a, a direct letter to the commissioners, but we did pay out for staffing that was unnecessary and, um, that's something that we tried to address that was not resolved. And so I weigh that also in mind with the, the letter that we received. And I think that as far as any complaints from the public, you know, those weren't to do with the inspection company itself. I think those were really early on in the pandemic and mainly due to people not wearing their masks properly, which we addressed right away with them and that was taken care of properly as well.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to know what the, what, uh, kind of the final analysis was, uh, on that complaint. Thank you.
Um, county attorney has looked this contract over. You find that we are properly indemnified so that if there is an incident, we are not.
Yes.
Yes, and I, um, had a lengthy conversation as well and I sent e-mails to both Greg and Ariana. And so they're both aware of any concerns and I think they've addressed them.
So should, we should probably act on this before she goes into the. I would make a motion that we approve the watercraft inspection contract for 2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? I was always curious, I'm on the committee, um, for the AIS. And we realize that this isn't a 24/7. You know, how, how can we possibly monitor or police every, every boat landing? It, I, I'm curious about the research that goes into some of this. Of course, I'm new to the whole, to the whole issue, Ariana. Um, we're spending money on a treat, on, on, on something that is not a treatment. The, the invasives are already there, like, like the Minnebell so, um, situation.
Yes, yes.
It's already there. So now, what, what will the inspections be really eliminating? Just the slowing of the process or, you know, to me, I would think the money should be spent on treatment because every lake is going to get all of this. It's not a matter of if, it's just when.
Um, so respectfully, Commissioner Bredesen, I, I strongly disagree that it is a matter of when. It is definitely a matter of if, if we look at the data and what we've seen throughout the years, not just in Minnesota, not just in the US, but internationally too. Um, you know, Meeker County only has 10 infestations or, well, not 10 infestations, but 10 infested waters uh, listed on the state list and that's, uh, that's huge. If you look at some of our surrounding counties, especially with how many lakes we have, with how many transient boaters we have, um, you know, I look at the, the infestation status of the county and I see that these are tax dollars that are used for prevention and management and they're being used wisely. Because otherwise we would see, like you said, this in every single lake. Um, what I would keep in mind is that the, the perception that treatment is more preventative or, um, I, I would say a better use of funds is very, very common amongst, um, anybody that is either walking into this new or folks who have a vested interest in properties that are infested because that's kind of your first line. That's where, where you're, um, kind of the cookie jog your hand is in, so to speak. Versus when you're looking at this countywide, statewide, kind of what our risk is from other counties, what our risk is within the county. Um, you know, inspections are our first line of defense. We can treat, but at the point that you treat, you're not preventing it from getting anywhere. You're just reducing the biomass for a certain period of time. You have these inspections in place, you're making sure that your traffic from an infested water in the county is going checked during its busiest hours, peak hours of the season. So we're using the funds in the most cost-effective way so that our costs intercede with our efficacy. And we're not focusing our resources on trying to protect the other 90 or so lakes in the county that are not infested. Um, because that would be unrealistic. We don't have the funds to do that. We can't staff them year-round, season-round. So what can we do? We can focus our resources on infested waters. We can mitigate that traffic so that our infestations aren't spreading within the county since that is our greatest risk. And, um, you know, we can treat. Treatment is great. Uh, treatment does reduce, like I said, the biomass. Treatment does give us, um, a more stable ecosystem over time. But as I mentioned earlier, you know, the AIS committee and, um, Meeker County, you know, the initiative for responsible herbicide use is kind of how we're addressing the treatment concerns around AIS prevention and management to make sure that we're really uh, centering our, uh, our, uh, community funds and the grant dollars towards effective treatments versus our inspection program, which is an entirely different entity. And that is really more prevention-focused, which is what the funds are meant for. Hope that kind of clears up the distinction between the two.
And I hope that the inspection people are, um, gracious and educators when people come. I think that was maybe a part of that letter issue too, Ariana, that they, they need to educate me, uh, people at these boat landings instead of, you know, oh, we need to check your boat. It, it's almost like, well, we, education is always good.
Yeah, and that's, and that's really our first, like I said, our first line of defense with inspections is not just that they're mitigating the physical risk, but they're also addressing one-on-one, um, which is why, you know, all of our contractors and waterfront, we've really emphasized hiring locally because we want to keep, um, basically our community members on our launches. That way, when our, you know, people in their own neighborhood go to their own lake, they see somebody they recognize. And so a lot of our inspectors are actually returning year to year. Um, the only complaint we really had around folks not having the best customer service or maybe being a little bit too harsh. And this is very, very common, um, is on one of our busier lakes in the county and it was actually during historically our busiest week of the season. Um, and that was just because they had to tell someone you can't back in because they had plants attached. And so sometimes our inspectors are going to have to raise their voice to be heard over other cars and other people talking. But, um, as far as, you know, direct customer interaction, I, I think that that's actually one of the things I find more reassuring with the, the folks in Meeker that come back year to year to do these jobs.
Very good. Do I hear any additional questions or discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. And your next point, Ariana.
Yes, um, so next up, we have the request for the purchase of a decontamination unit. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, this is something the committee has discussed for many years. Um, being that Minnebell is confirmed with zebra mussels and they are the highest trafficked lake in the county. Little, little context here too, just for the public or anybody listening that we haven't, I haven't talked to directly yet, or the few commissioners in the room. Uh, the DNR does staff a decon on Washington and Stella that will remain, um, as in previous years, alternating week to week. However, if we do not get this decon, we are looking at a 20, 20%, 30%, 40% coverage on our Minnebell, Stella and Washington, which would leave a very large amount of traffic within the county, um, unaddressed. And so part of the reason why we're getting this is so that we can make sure that our highest, um, risk lake to the rest of the infested waters in the county is managed, essentially. And this will, uh, basically ensure that when we have boats come to the landing and they have any, uh, standing water or attached plants, attached zebra mussels, um, watering of ballast tanks or bilge that we can't get out, we're able to essentially kill whatever might be harbored in that watercraft so that it doesn't add to the infestation, strengthen the infestation or bring in something new. And then with any kind of boats, um, or watercraft coming out of the lake where it's stationed, that would also mitigate the same, same threat. And there were, there was quite a bit of information in that, uh, RBA and the pricing, uh, schedule. So I'm just going to open this up for questions from you guys.
This is an actual machine that's going to be purchased with, is it federal funds?
Nope, this is state, this is state revenue funds. So this is under statute 477819, state AIS prevention aid. So it cannot be used for anything other than the, uh, prevention or management of AIS within the county that it's given to.
And the machine will rotate to various lakes?
No, so, um, kind of.
Minnebell.
So this year it would just be at Minnebell unless Minnebell had really low traffic and Washington or Stella had a huge competition and we wanted to make sure we had something on both landings. Um, but no, this, we're, we're lucky enough in Meeker County to only have three lakes with zebra mussels. Um, they, that's, that's not good, but it could be a lot worse. And so what this allows us to do is essentially make sure that our busiest lake in the county, Minnebell, doesn't have lakes coming off of it. And so what this allows us to do is essentially make sure that our busiest lake in the county, Minnebell, doesn't have lakes coming off of it, or boats coming off the lake and going to all of our other uninfested waters. If we rotated this, then those, when it's not at Meeker, you'd have boats coming out of the zebra mussel-infested lake. And it's a lake that, if you look at the inspection data, um, and you mentioned earlier kind of how these decisions are made, we make choices on staffing based on previous year's inspection data, um, analysis by the U of M, environmental analysis, and then also, uh, the history and length and conditions of the AIS that are present. So, um, there's a really good tool that's available called AIS Explorer. That's a tool, that's not what we base our inspection program on, but essentially if you look at that and you, you kind of adjust the settings, it will, it's a, something that was made by the Minnesota Aquatic Invasive Species Research Center. It gives you a prioritization for watercraft inspections, and that takes into account those factors I just mentioned. Um, and if you look at that, you'll see our inspection program to date has been in line with that. And I think that's part of the reason why we have so few infestations countywide. Moving this decon lake to lake, it's not a C D three B, it's not a boat cleaner. This is really meant to kill and remove, uh, vellagers of zebra mussels, um, or, you know, any kind of plant fragments that are attached, like star stonewort, or, um, spiny water flea is another AIS that's an organism. Um, New Zealand mud snail. So this is not something that we, uh, are providing as kind of like a, a watercraft, um, cleaning station. Those, those are, we're addressing the need for that with our tool stations that we're placing at the lakes. The decontamination unit is really just to mitigate the greatest threat in the AIS family um, from spreading out of our lakes that it's already in.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the purchase of the decontamination unit.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to purchase for the eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, a decontamination unit. Is there any discussion on the motion? Corey, would you take our roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson?
Yes. Motion carries.
Well, thank you, Arianna. Thank you for the questions, Commissioner Bretisson. Thank you guys for your time.
Alrighty, very good. Moving on down the agenda, we have Paul. Is Paul with us, or I think he's still?
Good morning, Julie, or Commissioner Bretisson. If I may.
Good morning.
Um, it was nice to hear about the vaccinations getting out from the hospital. Um, it, we have the Public Health Vaccination Clinic in our building, and it, it's really exciting. It's like Christmas when folks are getting their vaccinations. They're pretty happy. We just started vaccinating some of our staff, um, here last week. We've got some folks with their first doses, and it was really, again, like Christmas. Folks are pretty excited. Um, I'm just hopeful that when, uh, the hospital starts looking outside of their pods, that they're coordinating with public health. Um, public health is really seeking to serve the general public with their vaccinations.
They do when they can, you know.
Yeah.
When the seven hundred came up, Diane already had a, something scheduled, a clinic there, so. I think they do, um, coordinate when they can.
Good, excellent. Um, it, it, it's good to see that we're at this point finally after a year.
Yeah.
Um, just to follow up for Commissioner Schmidt, thank you for bringing the question, and I do have an answer on the seventy-five cent mileage. You are correct, it was in our budget. Um, what that is, 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 uh, um, we pay a twenty-two cents administrative fee to CCT. And if it's billed for PMAP client, somebody like Prime West or Blue Care, we're able to bill that administrative fee so that CCT can get that funds. Other words, if they're just under straight medical assistance, the IRS rate that we can bill.
No, thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Uh, so it's partially right, but not, not totally. Um, the first order of business I have for you, um, this morning is a request for board action to enter into a joint powers agreement with, uh, McLeod County, Kennebec County, Renville County, Malax County, Wright County, and Sherburne County. Sherburne County is going to be the, the fiscal intermediary for SNAP, um, work funds that we've historically paid to, uh, Central Minnesota Jobs and Training. McLeod County had been the fiscal intermediary for a number of years, but there was not any formal agreement on which they were able to do so. Um, McLeod County has changed some of their business practices and are moving out of that role. Sherburne County has willingly decided to take on this role of the fiscal intermediary for these funds. Um, as part of that, their county attorney wanted to enter into a joint powers agreement for the dispensation of those funds, and you have that in the, to your board packet. Um, this is small dollars, twenty-three thousand, um, and it is for our SNAP EBT recipients um, to, um, be able to access work, um, supports to assist them to potentially overcome the issues and concerns that bring them to SNAP EBT. The dollar amount obviously is, is, is small, but that doesn't mean the business that we do with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training is small. We have a number of other programs that we work with them on that, uh, are a lot more sizable than this. And those funds actually do run through our social services agency to pay for that. Uh, but considering the, the, the dollar value here, the twenty-three thousand is really for all of the counties. So that doesn't really go a long ways, and, and, um, this has worked out very well. This is just straight pass-through funds, um, for this program. Um, if you have any questions on the program or anything, I'd like to entertain those.
I would make a motion that we, uh, pass the SNAP joint powers agreement.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just find it kind of an interesting partnership when I was reading about SNAP and job training.
It's a, it's an unusual geographical dynamic, isn't it?
Right.
Um, and, and I don't know exactly how that was set up originally, um, when they were setting up these jobs and training districts, so I can't offer you any input.
No, I just thought it was interesting.
We don't lose control by not having our own, just our, our own business right here in Meeker County by sharing with all of these. Is it, do you feel, Paul, a benefit that we can, we can share things, or are we losing some control?
We, we're not losing any control based off of the way the, the joint powers agreement is written, that each county has their own quality assurance mechanisms and their relationships with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training. This is just a pass-through for those, um, particular funds. Um, we do have, uh, um, a, a contract with Central Minnesota Jobs and Training that is outside of that for a number of our other programs that we work with them. Um, and part of that contract is that, uh, we have some quality assurance mechanisms, um, locally, but also in partnership with the state for these, um, utilization of these funds. And also to ensure that they have a local office here, so I don't believe that we're losing anything. Uh, it's just that, uh, we're not really having to deal with the administrative headache of this small amount of dollars.
Any additional questions or discussion? We have a motion. Uh, Corey, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson?
Yes. Motion carries. Paul, what's next?
Uh, accounts payable.
Move to approve.
I'll second. I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve social services accounts payable. Is there any discussion or question?
Thank you for your quick response. My, my question was, yesterday I thought, hmm, fourteen thousand dollars, but it says volunteers of America. Why are they charging?
Right. Um, it's a nonprofit organization, and they do a lot of social service type things, but they also run a couple of, um, um, kind of group homes, rural facilities for children. Um, but you know, it was a really good question because, uh, when you look at the volume of the dollar amount, I think it was fourteen eight hundred,
Yep.
fourteen thousand eight hundred per month, um, really that, that is about what it costs for one person to be there. Uh, so if we have more than one person outside of, uh, living in their family home, you can see that the dollar value really does go fairly quickly.
Thank you for responding.
That's a step that's to me too. So where are we at with out-of-home placements? Am I imagining, or we a little, our, our numbers going the wrong direction again?
Uh, our numbers actually are staying fairly static. I just reviewed this. We're going to be.
I saw some big bills in there, so.
Yes, um.
Volunteers, and then there was another one for six something.
Just looked at some of our, our data here, and we're looking to prepare, uh, a presentation for the board on this. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're staying kind of static in the out-of-home placements, but I, I'm, I'm really concerned again is that, um, our reports that we're receiving. So, um, in two thousand nineteen, we received four hundred and eighty-some reports. Bear with me, I don't have the exact figure. Um, in two thousand twenty, we received four hundred and forty-five reports approximately. Um, that isn't including any of the school-based reports. Um, historically, about fifty to sixty percent of our reports come from schools. We have seen that number significantly reduced. So my concern, and I know that Commissioner Olberg shares this concern, that we're going to see a lot of things coming about within school, and we're, we're starting to antidote-ally see some of that activity now. Um, when we don't receive those reports, I think the numbers are skewed because we know that it's going on, and we know the schools are really engaged in this. Um, the one thing that's nice to know is that our community has stepped up, and people are paying attention to what's going on to the children in our community, and, and so we saw an increase in that. But I, I, I think that, um, just percentage-wise, that, uh, I don't know if we're going to fully stem the tide of out-of-home placements, but we have to continue to, again, to keep students at home.
I think, I think the results of having school closed for a year is gonna come, we're gonna find that down the road here, and I think it's gonna be eye-opening and alarming, so. I have one more, I have one more.
I just hope it's not true.
I hope, I hope I'm wrong. I have a question, and I'm not sure, and this is just curious.
Okay.
I don't remember if it was your part, but we bought a flags from BFW five four six zero. I'm trying to figure out, who's a BFW five four six zero?
Isn't that the Kingston one that we get?
Is that what it is? Is that where you buy them? I had, I thought fifty-four sixty.
It's in Meeker, I know, I think it is Kingston.
I think it's Kingston that has been rolling issues above the.
I always thought that was a legion there. I didn't realize that.
I recall that as well.
And that's a BFW, huh? That's fine, I, it just.
I'm pretty sure it's coming through that Kingston branch.
And that's, that's a BFW, huh? Okay, good. Now, I learned, I just was curious. I thought, I don't recognize that number.
Fifty-four sixty would be a BF, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Any additional questions for Paul on the motion to approve the social services accounts payable? Any additional discussion? Corey, would you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson?
Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
Yes, uh, um, since we were talking about this SNAP agreement, I'm sure there's a number of questions about SNAP benefits and how that impacts our county. So, um, the next board meeting, um, we will be doing a presentation on food security here in our county, which SNAP plays a real large role, and that's gonna be just more of an informative, um, presentation for you all.
So during COVID, did, did I understand that, that the amount of people are getting was raised?
Yes.
Getting a larger amount for food?
Yes, yes, and we'll be.
Quite a large amount.
Yes, yes, and there's, there's some positives and some negatives.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with you. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're also going to try to have, uh, um, uh, the, um, folks from the, the food shelf come as well to kind of give you a feel for what they're doing.
Just gonna tell you, if you know anybody looking for work, send them to any restaurant in town.
Oh, really?
Anywhere. We'll train, uh, yeah.
Um, if I might suggest, if, if those restaurants are paying attention now, um, get in touch with Central Minnesota Jobs.
I do, I put it on there. It's not working. We've had to cut our hours, in fact.
Okay.
I think there's, um, this unemployment being raised is fine, but it kind of, uh, makes it rough to get people.
Some challenges.
Just a, just a little ad out there, if somebody's looking.
Word of mouth is still the best way to get somebody in the door to work. You usually get a better.
It used to work, but it doesn't.
Well, word of mouth now is the internet.
That's true.
Social media.
That's certainly where I put it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I believe our next item on the agenda is Mikel, and I think I see Mikel there.
Gotta get this thing right.
Good morning, Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. What I have for you this morning are two contracts to ratify. So the first one in your packet is the, uh, clerical unit. It has a longer name, the Nonessential Criminal Justice Support Staff Unit, um, under MINP. So the changes that have been made in this contract, so this is for two thousand twenty-one and two, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so we updated the health insurance language. We made some other general language changes that you all saw also in our, uh, previous contracts, uh, trying to make some more, uh, consolidated changes so that they're all reflective of the same changes in, in the contracts throughout. Uh, so there is just some general language changes, uh, updating some, some language with the protected classes, adding some management rights language, removing the fair share language that had to do with the, uh, recent Janus decision with union dues. Uh, clarified some seniority language and updated work schedule language. This contract, uh, added good standing language to the vacation severance, and also added the sunset language to the deferred sick accrual benefit that we also did for other contracts and also for non-contract employees.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to ratify the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two MINP clerical unit contract.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? This is a two-year contract, Mikel?
That's correct.
Is there any additional questions or discussion? Corey, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mikel, you have another issue for us?
Yes, thank you. So the second one is to ratify the MINP non-licensed contract. So again, this is also two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. This also updated the health insurance language, and then the same changes that we had in the contract we just approved. So some general language changes, including updating protected classes, adding management rights language, removing fair share language, and clarifying seniority language. This contract also added good standing language to the vacation severance, and added sunset language to the deferred sick accrual benefit. This contract does increase the shift differential from seventy cents an hour to eighty cents per hour, and adds Christmas Eve as a paid holiday when it falls Monday through Friday.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, ratification of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two MINP non-licensed unit contract.
Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the non-licensed unit contract. Any discussion or questions?
I just, what does this include, if you can tell me?
The non- The non-licensed is the dispatchers, the corrections officers, and the corrections corporals.
What constitutes non-licensed?
So for the license, that would be your deputy is a detective, so they have to have a post license.
Okay.
And I meant to ask this, and the clerical is from the sheriff's department?
Mostly, except there's uh two in the attorney's office as well.
There is two in the attorney's office. Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion or questions for Mikel on the motion to approve the non-licensed contract? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Breterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Obergehr?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So.
Anything else for us, Mikel?
I I just have a couple of questions and stop me if I'm not, who do we have left and where we're at, whatever you can uh tell, refresh my memory on.
So we still have the uh MINP licensed group and the attorneys.
And are we?
So we uh are going to mediation soon with the attorneys group and the licensed group we're still working through.
So we are going to mediation with the attorneys?
Yes.
And you'll just keep us updated on that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mikel. Are you getting a lot of apps in for your part-time park board? I mean, full-time park board worker. I I didn't say that on purpose, truly.
You know, I haven't looked in the last few days, but last week we had quite a few.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I see Bar Block is next. Good morning, Bar.
Good morning, Julie. Good morning, Commissioner. Bar Block County Auditor. I have a couple of items. The first one will be the aggregate tax special reserve fund forms. A handful. So the committees have the aggregate committee previous and also we brought Andrew, Steve, and Julie up to speed here a short time ago with the uh special egg fund and the fifteen percent that goes into that and some of the challenges that we've had with regard to tapping into that money or leaving that money for its purpose. So what I'm asking for today is first to give a committee update. We had a committee meeting in person about two weeks ago. With the results of that committee, we finalized um a method to go forward with consideration. One of the problematic things that still is in our horizon is the expenditures for restoration of abandoned pits, quarries, or deposits located within the county. We are unable to totally come up with the absolute meaning or definition of no abandoned pits, quarries, or deposits located within the county. Then this portion of the tax shall be used for any other unmet reclamation need or conservation or environmental needs. So to assist a committee in reviewing requests that would likely come to us, we would like to um put into place a process, an application and a review process. The committee, the county staff, the commissioners, and also our county attorney helped develop this reimbursement process to which we feel now would give us a format to treat everyone alike and have a basis for working with this restoration dollars. The applicants must outline their project. This is one of the things we worked with, estimated project total and some in-kind contribution. We wanted them to be putting some of their own funds and or labor into it. The applicants could not request um to exceed fifty percent of the total project or ten thousand dollars would be our recommended cap. And the applicants will be asked if their property meets all current county zoning ordinance requirements. One of the problematic pieces of abandonment and restoration of pits when they're no longer using them and part of the law discussion on statute. So the aggregate committee today um shall consider all those facts obtained in that application and make recommendation for reimbursement for the consideration or also have a tool to deny the request based on um the work. So with the documents, the first one that we recommend that you approve, and you can approve them all as a set, but I'll talk to them about them just a little bit, was the reimbursement application process. So we laid out about nine points that would give us an opportunity to review the application and also give the applicant an idea of the direction that we may be going and where they would fill in um their ideas or their proposed project. We put it together an aggregate application material removal request form to which they would outline their project, put on there the dollars that they were requesting. And one of the recommendations at the committee meeting was to also put in there that the property meets the Meeker County zoning ordinance requirements, yes or no, so that they're on board with that secondary reason that we would be reviewing their request based on um what may already be an ordinance and a reason for the committee to consider a possible denial. And the last one is the findings of fact, and that lists out the different items that the committee would have to review and consider to be sure that they were ready for um an approval or would have an outline to show what we could use as a denial. So at this point, we would like to have the county board endorse this format for recognizing applications to the restoration fund. And if either of the two committee members or Brandy want to weigh in on something I might have missed, that would be welcomed.
I don't have anything to add. I think we beat this horse to death pretty good in committee, and I think we've come up with a pretty good solution moving forward for now.
I do have a question. Having been on the planning and zoning and the way that it's addressed there when somebody comes in for a permit is very vague. At the end, it shall be put back. Does that need to change a little too to correspond with this?
The committee had quite a discussion on um when is the violation a violation and when are we addressing that violation and in what format? There were a number of letters, I believe, that were sent, but we never, at this point, and never is a strong word. We have not necessarily moved them to legal action.
So long story short, Paul, I think um to add to that would be that you have a conditional use permit.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of that conditional use permit, you are supposed to restore.
Yep.
It back. That doesn't necessarily happen. And they get a letter, but we haven't, we have no real uh repercussion process from there.
But that goes back to my question.
But then they they come back and they reapply later to activate that, you know, say a road project in their area. So that pit might sit idle for, um not abandoned, idle, I would call it, for a number of years. And then they come back, apply for a new permit, you know, and maybe sell some gravel or or what have you to a road project. And then we, you know, then that permit is good for till X date, X date comes. And so that's kind of been what's happening. This is addressing more an abandoned pit where, you know, um where they haven't been paying the taxes or the county would get it back. That's kind of what the aggregate tax special fund is for.
Okay.
We don't have any pits that fit that criteria.
Okay.
So so my question was kind of that, kind of what he said, abandoned versus they just don't use it. And how often does that happen? Where you have a pit that hasn't been used? I mean, what's the length of time? Twenty years, fifteen, ten? I have no idea, but.
I believe in the committee, we discussed one that was a considerable amount of time, but it has not been sold. The individual has, you know, just left it idle, as we call it.
So then they come and want to reopen it? The road project is nearby?
Yeah, they they could. It's potential.
And they haven't done anything with it in all those years?
A number of years it's been letting growth come on it. There's a few.
Mattresses that you hear about and all this kind of garbage and.
One of the other items that also goes on is people will sell their property. We had two instances come before the committee, and that's one of the reasons this is being driven really hard. They purchased property that was not quote-unquote in compliance with our zoning ordinance. And part of the zoning ordinance indicates that if you purchase property that's not in compliance, you as the owner become responsible for bringing that into compliance. So there, you know, there's considerable amount of time. There's also a situation in the county right now where it likely is depleted. So it probably will not be reopened. And would that be a situation that's in violation of the zoning ordinance? One might say yes, because it was supposed to be cleaned up, changed ownership, and brought back to farmland or whatever it is that it's supposed to be, wetland or restoration of of a grassland. So this is a s- very difficult statute to work with when it's called no abandoned.
Sure. So we don't, so everyone is not the same on it. I'm not gonna use this anymore. So what is my responsibility to do at the, when I'm not gonna use this pit anymore? I can't just drive away and leave it, sit there for parties or whatever, right? Or is there something in writing?
To reopen a pit, in all likelihood, the CUP has expired. That timeframe has expired.
Sure, but.
So, and there's nothing in that that says at the end of the expiration of a C CUP, do they have to reclaim within five years or ten years or something like that? That kind of, you know, kind of goes to what Beth is asking. I kind of have an agreement there that.
I think I I'm gonna disagree a little bit because I think it is in the CUP that when you're done, it does need to be, and Greg has the the slopes.
Has to be brought back to something.
It has to be.
Yes.
Your standards in there.
Their standards in.
That's my question.
It has not been.
Oh.
There's a timeframe.
Okay.
And then does somebody, does somebody inspect that to make sure that's happening?
No, that's not. That's, that's the teeth on the end of it is.
The what?
The teeth on the end of that CUP is.
There isn't any.
Where the question is. The one that we have that kind of brought this about was that um gentleman, a property owner, sold the property with a pit that was not um reclaimed. So it, and but not abandoned, taxes were paid, everything was uh up to par. The new owner came in and wants to apply for gravel tax funds to reclaim that pit. Well, you bought it in violation of the CUP. So now that's where we readjusted and came up with a plan that you're gonna give us a plan and you're gonna have up to fifty percent we'll give you. But we're not going to give you gravel tax funds to put this into a what could be a farmable situation or possibly a CRP situation where now you're gra- getting either rental payment or a government payment on land that you use government pay money to put back into that.
So that's kind of a buyer beware situation. They, somebody has to make.
You bought it.
Other things we've talked about, when they buy a piece of property and find out later they can't put a garage where they're supposed to, and then they come to planning and zoning and they still can't. Is there's, how to, is it up to the broker to fix or how?
It should, well, I mean, if you have an open pit, you're gonna know you have an open pit on your property.
Well, you know, we won't let a piece of land get sold without updating the SEPTIC system. Yet we let a piece of land get sold that should have had a reclamation done on it.
Right. That's right.
And the only thing I'm aware of that's going out is that the zoning office, Greg sends numerous letters reminding them of.
He does do that?
This has not taken place. Wasn't that his discussion, Brandy? But we don't have the teeth at the end of those letters or we don't imply.
There's no fine, there's no.
So down the road, is there gonna be? I mean, I don't like that kind of thing, but.
I guess.
Some responsibility. You can't just take out and take out and never put back. That isn't how.
And and there is a pot of money that is designed for reclamation too, right? So is, am I not?
That's, that's.
Correct or not?
Well, you're correct. You're correct. The trouble is getting the lid off the pot.
Right, because then what happens is the new owner wants to take and get that pot and then, you know, increase the value of his land because he normally bought it.
Right.
With that.
Yes.
In mind, with that in mind?
Yes.
Right. I think so. I don't know. That's.
That was kind of what I was getting at. Who's responsible for doing this before we get to that point?
It's a, it can be a slippery slope if you go down.
I think in the past, the only time one of these pits was when a neighbor complained about the unsightliness. That would be brought forward that it's been vacant or unused for a long time. Cause there's been nothing else. We haven't had an inspector go out and say, you know, it it kind of comes down to that. Would I be wrong in saying that, Barb?
Well, and I, and one thing we, and we talked about on gravel tax committee too was that if somebody's mining, if if uh hard drives comes in and is mining gravel for a road project and you're getting paid by the yard, part of your, as a landowner, what you should have in your contract with them is when they're done that the back slopes are down, so that, you know, that's part of your your commitment. I mean, that, hey, you're responsible for that CUP, so if they're coming in and mining from you, at the end, you better make sure that they're they're putting it into some sort of reclaim situation. You can still come in in ten years, get a permit and open it back up again. But I would be buyer beware on that point that you're responsible for that CUP, not hard drives. So have that in your contract when you're selling that yardage out of there that they're putting it back into some sort of shape. Their equipment is there, so.
There, yeah.
It's, that would be my suga- if I owned a pit, that's what I would.
That's to get double dipping.
Yes.
You're taking the profit of getting the gravel and then trying to.
And then trying to take gravel tax money and restore.
Exactly.
And then you can turn it into CRP and get a payment through the federal government. It's like, no, you can't.
Wow.
Let me give you a little background for those that work in the aggregate part, that that was part of the committee that we brought them up to speed and what we've been working with. So part of the aggregate committee issues here is that fifteen percent that's going into that restoration. And a statutory change was made back in two thousand five, six, seven, eight. I can forget the exact year where it changed. It used to be that it was directed to be a reserve fund for forfeit property or truly abandoned property brought back to the county. And now the county had a responsibility that could be really, really expensive. They took the word forfeit out of that statute when they changed it and just changed it to now read if there are no abandoned pits, quarries, or deposits within the county. Then the county can use this fund for some other unmet reclamation. That's where it became testing now as to what type of an application can come to us that would not be construed as personal gain, you might say, or using public funds. Because if this isn't a public purpose that we're gonna use this fifteen percent on, anyone could say it would be giving someone a personal gain. And so looking at the statute more clearly and having many hours of discussion around this issue, there is possibly the need for conservation or environmental. One of the things that was brought up at committee was maybe there is some horrible erosion in one of our public roads. Would not be a public, it would not be a gain to a person, but it would be a public purpose we could use this funds for. If we came around and said there are no abandoned pits, because keep in mind, the statute goes back to the fact that we have to identify no abandoned pits. And is it abandoned pit, one that is just neglected or currently not in use? Or what is the term of abandon? And as we go through the uh round and round in circles, as somebody said the other day when we were at the meeting, this is a ball that just keeps rolling with the attorneys. We we just didn't have a way to go.
So do we know how many abandoned pits we have in Meeker?
We believe we don't have any because at this point.
I can tell you how you know. I'm a city girl, but what we did at gravel pits was not, we had parties. That's where we partied.
They don't, they don't mine at night.
They still do that. I'm pretty sure of that.
That won't cover it, huh?
So I guess until we have better direction on that fund, and our fund is not that large, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is in that fund that we feel we can't tap. But, you know, if we were to get a project as that initial um statute was designed, that might be very little in terms of what we would have to do to clean one up.
I still, you know, if you don't use it for ten years, it's still not abandoned.
Correct.
It's really not abandoned till you can't use it anymore, till it's unusable.
And that would be my interpretation of abandoned. Abandoned would be in essentially where no one owns it, there's no taxes on it, and there's truly no responsibility. No one has responsibility for it.
We don't have that.
So we had two applications come through, one payment where um the owner sold it and the new person bought it. Now they're coming in requesting tax funds at the suggestion of one of our past commissioners. And the issue is that the CUP follows the parcel of land. So when it's sold, that CUP, and even if it's expired, any expiration of the CUP goes to that next owner. So that owner has the responsibility to reclaim it themselves. Now, the second application applicant came in and same thing, they purchased the parcel and it was expired. So what they did is they went out and just reapplied and got another CUP, even though they may not be using it. That way they're not looking like they're in violation. So.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah, interesting.
Is that, is abandonment meant in the county attorney's description? And Barb, from your description, is that, I mean, that's unilateral. I mean.
Basically forfeit.
It's basically forfeit property, a property that now, or or even environmental needs, it could be interpreted as property now that is a public responsibility.
Yeah.
We believe that's the the underlying intent of the statute. So in order to vet all of the different applicants and to. Consider them equally, if we either find they satisfy the need or to deny them, we wanted a formal process. And this is what was recommended. I reached out to the Department of Revenue, I reached out to the uh state auditors. Department of Revenue sent me to the state auditors. I reached out to legislative help. And full circle back, and I've been working on this for probably about two years now, or a little better. We feel this is probably in the eyes of our county attorney and our committee, the best method. So that we have something tangible that we can use to vet an applicant and let the money be there. And if indeed the highway department came with a project that was um an environmental need of our county. We can review that and see if he, if the outline might fit. So today I would like you to endorse the request for those three forms.
And the purpose for the request is because, for the process and forms is because we were getting requests and we were denying them. You know, and if you're gonna deny someone, we wanna make sure we're not arbitrary and capriciously denying them. And so this way we're following a standard form. So if there's any issues, you go through the line. Most likely everyone's going to um be in violation of the C U P. So you, if you had a a pit, the C U P required you to reclaim it. So I think that's gonna trip up every time. So I don't see these funds being used. And so at our committee, we recommended that we go out to get some legislative help on readdressing these. And that it would probably be best coming out of the highway or auditors um committees, groups.
Makes sense. It sounds like you've done a lot of work on it, so.
Yeah.
We have done a lot of work and it just keeps on circling back. I think um the comment about the ball rolling back and forth is exactly what's happening here.
But you've worked on it for two years and you are comfortable with what you're asking us to recommend?
Believe that we've come with a good product.
You know, you can always add or take away as, as you go and we do that.
And the format we use was very similar to a zoning application. That was the guideline we use. So these forms look similar in the application process and the facts are similar. Because we didn't wanna have something totally different than what was customary in our county for a alike, kind of a like application.
So you're looking for a motion?
To, to um have these three formats implemented for the county with review for the aggregate committee.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve all three aggregate tax special reserve forms.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I do have one comment by me. Uh, we did reach out to other counties to see what their process is and they don't even have an application process. The money's just sitting there and they said, good luck. So this is um something that we crafted on our own and. Didn't have the opportunity to get any feedback from other counties.
Good work then.
And, and we might add that I th- I think we reached out to our state representatives too and basically the state said, well, when you figure it out.
Let us know.
Let us know and we'll tell you if you can do it. So they, everybody keeps throwing the ball back at us. So this is, this is our ball.
We're basically inventing the wheel.
There you go, somebody has to do it.
Now, can we take this motion and approve all three points? Which includes an application form, the application process, and a criteria form. Can we do this all within one motion?
I think that was preferred.
That was my intent, uh Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? On the approval on the uh aggregate tax special forms? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg.
Yes.
Motion carries. Well done.
Thank you. The next item is the repayment of ditch.
Next item for us, Barb.
Yep, okay, sorry. The repayment of ditch loans and the reason. Um, I was asked here to also explain why we take ditch loans from revenue and that's, you know. At year end, it's important that all of the ditch accounts have a black checkbook or a black balance or a positive balance, I guess you might say. Each one is maintaining their own repair fund balance. And so there's always a gap between the billing and the. Um, end of the year work that we try to cram in. And so that's the reason that I took a number of loans. So that those particular funds were in the um positive balance.
I think I recall we've done this almost every year since I've been in the commission.
So assessments were levied um in twenty twenty in December and the landowners, townships, and neighboring counties have paid. And um to date I have received about seventy-seven percent of those. Um, the remaining balance will roll over and be collected with twenty twenty-one taxes. So at this point, I would like to have a a motion to repay the loans along with the interest as indicated on the schedule that I provided.
Make a motion that we repay the loans along with the interest.
We have a motion to repay loans. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Any discussion?
Beth is asking for the interest rate and these are either at a four percent, the older ones, or two percent, the newer ones.
Two was sticking in my, but we still do have some.
And we just.
There were a couple older ones, yeah.
And we did uh most of these, we, we uh, what was it, December meeting, wasn't it? The four hundred that we moved from general into.
Right.
So I mean, this has been a short term.
And that probably in this point of discussion, there are three systems coming down from cross-county billing. I really thought I would have had them by now. I'm not sure exactly, you know, the reason, because they've been approved by the joint boards. But I will be coming back very shortly for what could be up to the three hundred thousand dollar loan. Depending upon how um the ball falls with regard to prepayment on those.
Any additional questions or discussion? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Oberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Barb?
Okay, Cedar Mills Gun Club is asking for a renewal on their three-two license. They do not have an event just on the horizon. Because of their uh COVID shutdown situation. But this um license ended on February seventh and they're asking for a renewal. And with the county board being the governing body that issues that, I'm asking for you to approve that.
I move to approve the Cedar Mills liquor license renewal.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion to renew Cedar Mills liquor license renewal. Any discussion? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Barb?
The next item is a renewal of consumption and display permit. We have just one of those in Meker County, the Riverside store in Tavern. And again, this governing body um will make a recommendation. The actual license is from the Department of Public Safety Alcohol Gambling Division. This is done annually and their license expires annually on um March thirty-first.
This Riverside, that's the one in Forest City? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Riverside cons- uh consumption renewal license.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Right, we have a motion with a second to approve Riverside renewal of their license. Any discussion? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Barb?
The next item would be the payables that were sent out yesterday for the credit card county and hospital.
Move to approve.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve county and hospital accounts payable. Are there any questions or discussion? All right, Cory, would you please take roll call?
Commissioner Oberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else for us, Barb?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Next, I believe we have Andrew.
Yes, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Lisa Bretisson. Not Bretisson, I'm sorry, Graffitine. Apologize, one sec.
I mean, Commissioner, thanks to Graffitine with the Economic Development Authority. And as most of you know, Meker County, along with all the other counties in the state of Minnesota. Received funding for business relief grants. Um, there was a three-tiered system where they provided some funds directly to. Restaurants, convention centers, and then the third tier was to go to counties to provide via a more customized. Application process. And so we were provided just under four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to provide to businesses. We promoted it via social media, radio, chamber, newspapers, um and then we had the applications that were due on February twelfth. We received fifty-nine applications that requested more than double of what we had available. So the first tier was really looking at maybe who was ineligible. We did have only forty-five that were determined to be eligible. Reasons for ineligibility were a state lien. They couldn't have a state lien on file that was unpaid. Um, we had one that was located in Stearns County, a business sold, um one that had closed. In the time before they, or after they applied. We had some ineligible nonprofits that applied. Um, we had a number that didn't show any profit or revenue losses and that was kind of a key criteria is they had to show some type of declines in revenue or profit due to COVID. And then we just had a couple too that were incomplete as well. Um, and then what we did is because each business is unique. We scored applications based on a number of factors. We looked at um basically, were they directly impacted? Did they, were they not able to secure other funding? So we had some businesses that hadn't received any type of PPP, idle, cares, anything. Um, we looked at their revenue loss, profit loss, um and then other factors as well, you know, where they maybe. Only had small losses, but they were sitting on high payables. So kind of again, took all these different things into consideration. Scored them and then basically put together some funding recommendations. And our economic authority, we met last week. Um, made some adjustments. So we reviewed the, the information, kind of looked at the scoring and the revenue profit losses that businesses had, make some adjustments. And the list in front of you is um the recommendations that the E D A has for the county board. Um, and in terms of with the funding, we do have to have all grants awarded by March fifteenth and then the funds expended by the thirty-first. I think April first is the date, but we have to have everything done prior to that. So with that, that's kind of a quick summary. You'll see a lot of our businesses, you know, were those that were directly impacted and forced to close. Um, our restaurants, our fitness centers, bowling alleys, a number of them. A lot of them are still being impacted, a lot of our salons. Um, and those that were impacted, kind of that first round, continue to see um low amounts of of customers and revenue coming in. And so just a variety of businesses that did apply for the funding.
So, can I ask quickly, so it didn't matter if they got help from the last cares money that wasn't considered or it was?
We, we did ask every applicant to disclose all the other funding from.
PPP or what it was?
Yep, and so when we basically, the, the bottom number we looked at for revenue and profit, we took into account, you know, what's been forgiven for PPP, idle, cares. So we took all of that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Those numbers.
Thank you.
There, yep. And we did have a number of our restaurants that did not receive the state funding. So I think that's really important to note that. That roughly ten, fifteen thousand that went to restaurants, we had a number of them that did not receive that. They had to have a. A thirty percent or more drop um in their revenue and we had a significant number that were in that twenty-two to twenty-nine percent. And so.
So as the state put theirs out, because I know people that are down sixty, seventy percent that haven't gotten anything, the state, are they still doing it?
I think it's, I thought they're all out. I think most of the businesses that I talked to that did receive it were getting it in January and early February. There was a very short appeal process and so I know I talked to a few bu- businesses that did try going through that appeal process. But it could be something, I know we've run into some businesses that maybe don't do quarterly reporting, but do it on an annual basis. And so if it didn't hit that exact timeframe they were looking at, it threw them um.
But this was the funding that was going, coming directly based on your sales checks, correct?
Correct.
And they were just gonna send out a check?
Yep, so there was basically no application process. They just directly sent it to them. But I know there's been some snafus. I haven't heard of a ton here in Meker County, but in other cases, when businesses sold, it went to the prior owner, not the current owner. And some things like that happened. But um we did have a number of our businesses that didn't qualify for that. So fortunately, we had this to be able to. To fill in where maybe the state dollars didn't.
So I wonder if they'll have to pay state income tax on this.
They, they will have to on the PPP, I know, so far unless they get a change.
We are advising, yeah, we basically tell everyone.
Pretend you are.
Yep, so talk to your, work with your, closely with your accountants because whether it's cares or PPP or idle or this funding.
I think not federal on PPP, but I've been reading that state on PPP. But they're also gonna be in Supreme, this is off the trail here, but. People that are getting that extra four, three, six hundred a week on employment, they're getting, they're getting W two's on that. I wonder if they're going, what's this? You have to pay tax on that. And us, they, they're not, really? Yes, you do, so.
Well, it does sound like you did a very good job of vetting the group that's up there and thank you for that. I, these businesses needed, I, I know some of these businesses personally and, and it's gonna make a difference to some of them. It really is, so. Thank you for your work. So do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the COVID relief small business grant disbursements as listed.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the grants from the Economic Development here. And is there any additional discussion or questions? Cory, would you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Schmidt.
Abstain.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bretisson.
Yes. Motion carries. Anything additional?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Anything additional there, Andrew?
Uh, nope, we're ready to move on.
Okay, took four of that. The next thing on my. Agenda that says Board of Commissioner Committee Updates. Should we start with District One?
Is that you, Paul? Sorry, Julie, I was just kidding.
Let's do a fruit basket upset.
Well, um, I had a couple things. We all, I think we were all at the AMC Legislative, weren't we? So, I don't know if I'm gonna go over much of that. One thing I did reach out to Andrew on that I thought was interesting and he had already thought of it, of course, was. Um, to get some information from the departments on, on unfunded mandates and see how that affects our property tax. I think that would be interesting for our constituents and taxpayers to know. So I think, I think you're starting to gather that a little better. It'll take a while, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we, I, we had a conversation with uh department heads at our, our staff meeting last week and, and there's gonna be some challenges and being able to pull that together. Because so much of it is kind of interwoven into what we do. Um, but we're gonna make an attempt to get some information.
Well, I mean, I think whatever we can do is being interesting, cause I, I think we don't know, you know?
Well, eighty percent of what we do is state mandated and then it's pulling out which pieces are.
Funded and which is not non-funded, so. And is it all funded or just part of it funded? So I won't go into that with great detail, cause I'm assuming, I think you were all there. Um, and then I, I'm on Health and Human Services and I only got to see part of the committee meeting in the afternoon. Um, because I, I, some other things came up, but um I know that. But I know that legislatively, they're supporting their continued work with telehealth strategies through, I think they've done it at least through two thousand twenty-one. And I think they're finding out there's a lot of efficiency with that, so who knows how much of that will continue. And also, I think they talked about waivers. So, I'll leave that with the AMC. I also had a shelter meeting. We were in the midst of our Save Our Tales Online. That wrapped up Friday, so I haven't gotten any information on how it went, but we're always open for donations. You can just go to the website and hit the donate button. Their funding this year is, they always have a fund to need, and the one thing they're worried about not getting, which they do, and we're in person, I mean, Steve's been there, so he knows. They'll say, this is our fund to need, and people really get into it then, you know? They start, who'll give fifty, who'll give a hundred, who'll, and so that's the part that they think they're not gonna make as much being they couldn't have it live. And their need this year is to improve the fencing where the animals go out for exercise and the gates and stuff, so I don't know how that. They went over our budget, and we are gonna be in the red again, and to the tune of about thirty thousand, I think, almost thirty, maybe more. But I, I will say they do a good job of getting people to step up the volunteers, the memberships, so we're always looking for money there. And then I had a Prime Health meeting, and I'm gonna tell you, I was glad Andrew was there. This was, some of this was a little over my head, maybe, or I gotta go to some more meetings, so I'll maybe let Andrew expound on that a little bit. December was the highest claims after deductibles, which that seems plenty normal to me, because, you know, that's when I have my work done, obviously. Though, they had a large case, I think that Commissioner Housman was always talking about. It might have been two cases.
Oh, yeah.
Making deferred payments. I think it was children.
Yeah, there was, there was one, it was, uh, in, I believe it was a s- an infant, if not a, a small child-
An infant, I think, yeah.
Significant issues that required, and will continue to require, um, care.
And they, they got that paid. They were, they were doing deferred payments to, it might have been Mayo, I, I can't remember who. And then the reinsurer's gonna kick in some on that now, so. Then they gave us a COVID update. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I, it sounds like they've done about a hundred and forty-seven thousand tests. And then I know that Housman always talked about, you know, Renville got bought out by Health Partners, and they were part of Prime Health for insurance. So, there's an online clause, and there's some penalties, and they're still, um, they're still having discussions. They haven't gotten the money, and I got cut off, and I didn't hear how it ended.
Yeah, so, so the, the gist of the situation is that the, the hospital in Renville, you know, they, the county sold the hospital, uh, and those employees were no longer then part of the county's health plan. And there was this, because there was a significant reduction in the pool of employees, Renville County then would be responsible to pay a penalty towards the risk pool. I think it was like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, I think so. And this has been going on since Housman was there, so you probably recall him talking about it.
Yep.
But I didn't know how they decided to-
So, the, they were, there's discussion of a couple of options to move forward, and, and ultimately, the direction was to continue to have conversations with Renville County and see if we can come to some sort of an agreed solution, rather than filing a lawsuit, or-
Yeah, I think our attorney is gonna meet with their attorneys or something.
Exactly.
Because, I mean, and I thought, well, but if you're looking at four hundred and some thousand dollars, you know that when you go in, and when you back-
It'd been part of the negotiation.
Right. And we can't let that go, because then every time, and then that's gonna be a problem for our risk pool, if that happens, correct?
E- exactly. And, you know, as, as the county, as Meeker County, um, you know, we're just one member of, of the risk pool as a whole. I believe this is the fourth year that the risk pools existed. Next year would be the fifth year. It's a five-year contract. And so, at the end of, starting in this fall, we have the opportunity to evaluate what it is that we wanna do going forward. And so, we're actually gonna have a presentation about that next meeting to have that initial discussion and see-
I don't know what the out is, although I think it's a two-year out.
Yeah, I think we would have to give notice by the end of the year if we anticipate, if we planned on getting-
I mean, that wouldn't be my, I mean, the only my, my que- how did you feel, Andrew, if you, if you wanna say? How, how do you feel their cash is? Okay?
Um, it seems like it's okay. Um, you know, it, it all kind of, like they said, it depends on how many large cases come through. You know, if they have, you know, one, everything's fine. If they have two, then it could become an issue, and three becomes a bigger issue. But they have the reinsurance, so, um-
And they have different, and if I'm understanding this now, and I didn't interrupt you, but then they have, this is a lot to kind of learn. So, it was my first meeting, but, so, they can have a, they do, make a deal with the, with the reinsurer on what they write off? And what, am I saying that right?
Exactly. So, basically, the way that the, the reinsurance works is you buy a policy so that our deductible is on, I, I can't remember if it's on a single case, or if it's on the aggregate as a whole. I believe it's a single case. They set it at a certain dollar amount, and if the expense goes beyond that, then the reinsurance company picks it up. So, it's just like, you know, our health insurance, you know? It, you, you, if you have the high deductible plan, you, you pay up to ten thousand dollars or whatever it is, and then the insurance company picks it up. Reinsurance is the exact same thing, but it's a million dollars, and it's for the entire insurance company. Um, and then, but we, we as a risk pool pay premiums for that, and if we are using it, our premiums go up. So, that has kind of those longer-term effects out there.
If, if you're unlucky enough to have two, I think that two large cases that you always used to hear Commissioner Housman talk about, and you could go, and that could happen.
Yep. Yep.
So, I think it's a good deal, but I'm gonna have to, you know, I have to learn more as I go.
The, the reinsurance, that's, I mean, your small mutual insurance companies are all re-insured by somebody, and that's, that's real common. That's a common.
That's how it is. That would lend their self-insured, that they have another insurance one that's just so much.
If we looked at any other option, like, we could make the decision that we wanted to become self-insured and have, you know, just a county-
We kinda looked at that when we got out of the co-op, because we were really struggling, you know? We were going up. I don't, Steve, were you on yet then, when we were going up twelve, thirteen, every year was not unusual. We had just had no luck with our, with our health, and, and so this was a much better deal. That doesn't mean we shouldn't always stay aware of it, though. I agree.
Yep, yep. So, that's the purpose of the discussion, uh, at the next meeting, is to start talking about what are our potential options that are out there? What do we want to explore through the course of this year?
Cause we're, we're still kind of going up, though, aren't we, with this insurance, though? Uh, at a, I don't know if it's at a ten clip, or is it in that area?
Actually, I don't recall what Prime-
No, I don't think it was ten.
Two point nine seven, I think.
I think it was, how much do you think it was?
Two point nine seven.
I think it was more than that.
I think-
Or was this, was this, was this a nine point seven?
No, nine point seven was peep. So, we, we have two insurance-
We were lower, we were lower than peep. Was it that low?
It was around three. It was around, right around three.
Cause I was, I was gonna say five.
Yeah.
But that's a lot better than what we had when we were in the co-op. We, we really had bad, bad years, and we, you know, it wasn't because, we never really could pinpoint what it was if we just were unlucky to have bigger cases.
Paul Burning said it was just unlucky. We had some vague-
Big cases, and I always said, well, it's age, and they said, no, it's not necessarily, but I think a lot of people have left that co-op since.
And I, and I think you always, you always run that risk if you make a change, and you jump into a new company-
I mean, we loved it the first year.
And then, oh, once they have two claims, and you, you, you know, jump out of frying-
It's a good discussion to have to see, comparison, to see what other companies are at, and see what we can do.
Absolutely. It is something we always have.
Or you could pay four hundred thousand dollars and get out now, right?
So, it's from a-
I think that's a penalty if you try to-
I, I don't think that we're in a position where we need to get out.
No, I know. I'm, I'm being facetious in that.
But you know, if we-
We've got the opportunity coming up, and so it's worthwhile to look at what's out there.
Absolutely. But if we, if we look back at the co-op, Danny, we should have gotten out sooner than we did, because it was year after year after year, and I'm like, where, what are we gonna? Every year, you think it's gonna go down, and it never did.
Yeah.
And that amounts to a lot of money when you're doing negotiations and your health.
Well, and that's, I was gonna bring that up on, on negotiations. We'd rather work with Prime Health than peep. I mean, if we could choose and say everybody's on Prime Health, that's worse.
Well, peep only is limited to different things, all right, from primes.
Although, you know, they bring, their, peep used to be really kind of fussy about who they took on, but they're taking, cause when I first started, but now, I, I know boards that I'm on. CCT, for instance, went from Blue Cross to peep. CHB had some employees go to peep. But I'm thinking now that's why peep is now going up more than Prime, Prime Health.
So, when you look at things like health insurance, you know, it comes down to what's the, um, wh- what are the, the claim history, but also what's the size of the pool? Because if you have a lot of people who are paying into it, and only a couple of people who are using a lot of that money, well, you don't need to increase the, the premiums as much year to year. So, I think peep is possibly looking to increase their size. So, peep is a state-run plan, for those of you who might not know. Peep is a state-run plan, but it's an HMO. And so, um, you, you have your primary care doctor, and you have to go see them and get a referral to go see a specialist if you, but you can't necessarily choose the specialist and all these sorts of things. So, there's a lot of restrictions that come along for the, the person who's on the plan, but it can be less expensive, and we've typically seen lower increases up until this last year.
Right, exactly.
So, there's, there's potential benefits to that as well, um, but, you know, we'll, like I said, we'll, we'll have this discussion and-
I think that, I, I agree with Steve, though. The more people we can get into Prime Health and not have two different coverages would probably be good. It would eliminate a lot of your negotiation issues, too.
It would, it would help, but I don't know if it's achievable.
Like, the sheriffs are all on peep, right?
Yeah.
A lot of the unions are on peeps.
All, all of MinP and the LELS group is on peep. So, basically, everyone in the sheriff's office is on peep, and then everyone else is on Prime Health.
And even when we were in the co-op, they were on peep. They, they've always had their own.
Yeah, right when you learn insurance, it changes.
There you go, that's true.
Well, that's what I said, and then you change. When you jump into a worse situation, no worse.
So, anyway, that's what I had, unless you wanted to add anything about Prime Health, that's what the meeting's I had. Thank you.
Well, from the legislative conference, there was a couple of things that came up. Number one, both Andrew and I were on the one with the gentleman from St. Cloud. And he talked about resolutions that come to their board. And so, they have, they set up, what was it, a, a criteria?
Yeah, they, they establish, St- um, Stearns County had established a, a policy that, that basically states that they're not going, the board is not gonna, uh, even consider any sort of policy statements or resolutions that are related, that are not related to issues that are directly related to county business.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
It does.
I mean, you just take away a lot of, you, you were more policy-based rather than resolution-based, I think, this board. You know, and I think that would eliminate a lot of that kind of gray area and stuff, and-
So, I think Andrew is looking into that, correct?
Correct. So, I, I worked with, with Brandy, and, and we've come up with, um, well, basically what Stearns County has come up with. She's, she's comfortable with. Additionally, I've been working with my counterparts in other counties to get a sense of who else is doing something similar. Candy Ohio is actually considering it today. And as well as, I think I have seven or eight other counties around the state who have adopted it or are considered and adopted.
So, is this because we don't wanna take a stand on the Second Amendment?
We already did.
We already did that. And I, I'm gonna tell you that I feel we have a responsibility as county commissioners to take on some things that sometimes aren't very comfortable, so. I'm certainly glad to look at that information, but I was put here for a reason, and, um, I'm not afraid. You have to be bold, and, and if I disagree, I will say I disagree, but I understand, uh, people's hesitancy and worry about the Second Amendment. It's because of the political stuff that's going on right now, and we already did that. So, I know we got another one sent to us that they, so is that what, is that what brought this on, or what brought this on?
What brought this on was, it was, it was, it was the AMC new commissioner training.
Right, but I mean, what brought, why did Stearns County decide to do it?
I think Stearns County decided to do it, well, so, according to their administrator, they had, he'd kind of always just taken it on and, and responded to folks and with a formal letter saying, sorry, the board doesn't take these, these issues on, and it, it seemed that it kind of grew beyond that. And so, uh, he decided to go to his board and, and get, um, direction one way or another, and get formal direction.
Well, I understand that, but I just, I'll, I'll just stand by what I said. I think we're here to sometimes take on some uncomfortable, now, if by statute, we're not supposed to. If somebody can show that to me, that's another thing, but we're a part, part of government. We're their first city, county, state, you know? We're responsible to our citizens. That's my opinion. But certainly, we should, we can look into it.
Then also, I saw something in there about a grant for recycling. And with our issues out at the recycling, uh, area, I contacted Andrew again and said, can we look into this and see if we are eligible for it? Because we have a shortfall to keep that one operating for the next twenty years. It's gonna be an expensive project, so any money we can get that would relate to that, I thought would be good. So, I contacted Andrew and let him dig on that one.
So, is it recycling, like, what kind of recycling?
So, I, I followed up with, with Greg on that, uh, because Greg and Brent have been taking on the solid waste, uh, as they've taken over the transfer station. And, um, as, as you know, our dump that's out at the transfer station, out of that area, is for construction materials, uh, construction waste. Um, so what this grant is more focused on is, um, setting up, you know, new curbside recycling programs or household, household hazardous waste collection sites, things like that. So, there's not quite a direct nexus to our, uh, our dump. But that being said, um, one of the other pieces is, um, there's a, a composting piece as well. And so, we're looking into whether or not, um, you know, purchasing a grinder to help grind that material down at the, at the dump to allow it to compact better and allow us to use the space more efficiently and get more material in there before we have to cover it up and fill it up and go into the next cell. If we could maybe use that same type of machine for compost grinding for yard waste material, and then, um, maybe it would be eligible for a grant, and maybe we could work with the city of Litchfield with their site. We're, we're working out that sort of-
I wonder if that's the machine that Commissioner Larson talked about that they went and saw.
Yeah.
That was a very expensive machine, wasn't it?
It's a half million bucks, but it would, it would give us a six, it would increase our seven to eight-year life expectancy out there to twenty-five to thirty years. So, and it would reduce the need for daily cover on the pile. I mean, it, it was measurable, um, return on investment, um, but it's, it was an expense, too.
So, this grant, you have to add services, in other words, to get it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for the recycling side, you're adding services, and it would, it's, it's to cover kind of the startup costs of a new service and operation, and then we'd be responsible for the operating costs beyond that.
How much, how much is the grant?
It, it depends. Well, the maximum grant was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it depends on what it is that we, we chose to do, talking with Greg and Brent, looking at the timeline of when the grant was due. We, we didn't have the time to pull a whole new program together for it.
And I mean, if you could get that machine, if it was five, half a million, and it got half of it paid, it would certainly bar it.
Ab- absolutely. And so, that's the sort of thing that we're gonna look at eventually for next year, and so they're, they're gonna work on pulling that information.
So, that, that, that is specific then for a new thing, then?
Yes.
I mean, okay, I, I gotcha. Otherwise, you get a whole new thing, and you get a whole bunch of more costs and stuff.
There you go.
Your grant is gone, you know?
It's basically an unfunded state mandate.
There you go. There's the first million.
I mean, they're giving you the seed money, but I take it. I mean, I mean-
But if it's something that we would have had to do anyway,
Yeah.
to get the life expectancy, then we need to.
Except it's not mandated that we do it that way. But you're saying it has long-term.
The, the demonstration that we went to with, with Roto Chopper out there last year, the amount of material we put through there in a small pile that came out the other side is, I mean, sixty-five percent, in my estimation, would be a, a mild, um, estimation. I mean, we could reduce-
We talked about, we talked about selling the waste, solid waste at one time, or leasing it, or I, I don't know if we ever pursued that anymore, but just kind of got rid of the whole problem, and then I don't-
The trouble that we had there is we still have to do a lot of the exact same things we're doing now. So, we, that's why we went, it's not, it's not the KRD anymore. They got that changed in it, or is it still KRD?
It's still KRD.
It is, okay. Okay, it's, uh, that's why we sold that portion out, because that we felt was beneficial. But as far as the management and having it on our property, and, I mean, you're, you're responsible. So, we wanted some, uh, a, a little more, uh, arm strength, if you will, in that process, as long as we're filing the reports and certifying with the state.
There's no chance of privatizing that either. I don't know, I, what the-
That's what I'm saying. Then we'd be, then we'd be, we're still responsible for the management and the paperwork and a lot of the things.
I meant the whole thing.
Yeah.
Oh, we're, we're still-
We did some of it. It's partially privatized.
Oh, okay.
The transfer piece. I mean, everything, that's a-
I, I've never underst-
I, I don't, I don't quite follow the whole process.
I've never understood that whole process out there.
It, we, we've got, um, that's something that is gonna, I think, be on radar quite a bit. We got some work.
Like, if you go inside to pay for something, that isn't the county doing that. Those people work for someone else, right?
KRD.
KRD, or whatever it's called.
Yeah, or it's called, yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't know the hierarchy of it, so.
I don't either.
So, they, they- So they they and they run the day to day operations there.
And then we just own?
We we own the land, we have the the landfill, so all your household uh or your uh
The construction.
Construction materials goes up on hill, that's, there's a minimal fee for that. I mean, that's twelve fifty a ton.
It would be an interesting work session sometime.
Twelve dollar and fifty cents a yard, so.
Yeah, I.
There's tip fees, there's there's some things we can do to to help.
Yeah, I'd think that'd be kind of a, something to explore, you know, before you decide to put five hundred and, you know, I don't know what the how eligible we are for the grant.
And that was a.
How many years ago?
A demonstration that was last fall and
Oh, okay.
And I I mean, it wasn't a, we didn't really propose to go buy that or do.
Right, I know, but.
It's like, we know we have to address some things out there and that was one of the avenues that uh Phil uh Valant, who for the county helps run things out there and and do the cover on the Phil. He he's he'd line that up and ask us to come out there and take a look at this, so.
So we can definitely set up a a work session where we we talk about um what we're doing now and what our options are going forward.
And timelines, because.
It's your grants that you're looking at, right?
Not necessarily the grants timelines, but more so this extending it to that twenty five year period. What is our, you know, those are important. That we're not getting those at the last minute and trying to address it.
Right.
Absolutely.
Um county's providing technology. Um we are scheduled to go on the server March twenty second. Testing has been going very well, um because we're fully testing right now. There's no partial, it's a full. Um so kind of looking forward to that. And then they um changed a little bit of the web access costs, um kind of streamlined those, so uh everybody's paying the same amount. Ours will actually go down by about thirteen dollars, so. Um, kind of looking forward to that transition. I went down and and saw the servers down there in the server room and stuff and.
Kind of dangerous area, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Keep your fingers crossed, nothing happens.
Uh I'm not gonna report on the EOC meeting from last Monday because it's already two weeks old. Or the data's old, monocovid and so forth. The only thing that came out of there was um the vaccine connector, which I did go on myself, I just was curious how it worked. Um I should be eligible for my shot sometime around uh August or September, so.
That's what happens when you're young.
Well, I only missed the sixty five by one year.
It'll get her.
Thank you, thank you. Um HRA meeting, uh attended my first one there in Dassel. A lot of things going on there. Uh Candy Ohio, I did not realize Candy Ohio administers the Bridges Program, so they basically do the funding. They take care of the money aspect of it. Oh, the vouchers, we talked about that and how that works, the public housing. Uh the question that came uh at the end was, um is it, does our county uh have a link to the HRA? Not as a part of our county, but but they are essentially an arm. And what they're wondering is, is it possible on the county website just to have a spot where they could go, like an essential links, you could click on it and shoot you to the HRA? I did.
Cory's saying yes to that.
Oh, you can. Oh, that'd be great, though. They'll be very appreciative of that.
I can work with Cory on some of the shelter and different things. If you are an organizations you want on there, I think we can get them on, can't record.
That'd be fantastic, good. Um let's see. Ucap, um had an opportunity, we had a meeting last Thursday. Those meetings start at five thirty. Um it's the end of the day, um it's a long meeting.
Brian used to drive all the way down there every time.
Did he really?
Yep. He never, I don't think he ever missed a meeting, do you think? He drove to Marshall, I think.
But um on.
Not saying you should, Paul.
On the day before.
I might mark that one down. Trying to avoid that.
Remember not to stop for that one.
Yeah, Marshall, that's all I heard of that.
No, I, he did. He went every, every week.
Well, they do so much. I mean, it's a, uh, I'm still trying to get my teeth around it. I did go and visit the Head Start Facility in Cosmos, a beautiful facility. Um I got there just after the kids had left, so I didn't get to actually see the kids in there. But um pretty impressive. In in the one room where they stage and and must do some training, they had the um CPR dummies laying there. The children and the adult ones. And so um this facility, for those of you who haven't been to Cosmos and seen it, sits off of Highway seven a ways. You can almost drive by that and not even know it's there, because the trees that surround it and so forth. Um they they were saying that they had two catalytic converters stolen off the vehicles out back because they parked some vehicles out behind. So um but then I went on to the next day to to sit on the Ucap meeting. Um and uh pretty much was a status quo. They went through the finances, they had the accountant on. But um I'll be honest, when when you have an accountant on, they're going through these things, it's going so fast. And it's so far above, I would be a liar to sit here and say I grabbed much of that. I mean, it's just coming too fast, there's too much information. Um so I have reached out to him and I said, can I get a a tutorial on what's going on? So I am gonna spend some time, I and a couple of other new ones on the board um to learn. So that we're better prepared for those next meetings and can be more help to the um to the Ucap organization, so. But that's um, that's about it here.
Okay, I think I'll go next. I attended on February eighteenth. I'm on the Environmental and Natural Resources Department of Association of Minnesota Counties. They had their meeting, multiple speakers, long meeting, many presentations. Uh the Board of Water and Soil Resources spoke, the Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Department and the Minnesota Pollution and Control. A couple topics of rather lengthy debate included there's some upcoming legislator voting about pollution emissions in vehicles. The cost, the recycling of and the weight of these batteries within the electric cars. That was quite a topic of discussion. Um how Minnesota is contemplating taking on the adopting of of emission rules similar to California. That was, that was.
The governor denies all charges on that. He was at the meeting.
Yep, and and one of the issues that was addressed was such as the impact on the ethanol production, which of course in Minnesota is kind of a big deal. Uh they talked about whether or not farm equipment and semis would be required under some of these new mandates. Especially if we, if we went with the California emission standards. Something was brought up called Next Generation Twenty Fifty. This is a program where there's a carbon exchange. Farmers would be getting money from factories to offset pollutants. Uh this is something to watch in the news, this is coming up. Then another topic, they talked about buffers, buffer areas around lakes and rivers and drainage ditches. It was going to be a hundred feet. Well, then they negotiated it down to fifty feet and it it has to do with it's a a private property or or a lake area. They said that there should be compensation to farmers, landowners, renters for their lost revenue when all of this buffer area has to be like a, like a grassed waterway area to buffer the the influx into the ditches. Years ago, when ditches were mandated in, I remember down in Renville County and so on, so farmers would have a place to put their tile drainage. Those farmers were compensated, whereas now that's not necessarily the case. And there was a lot of discussion about that. Uh and then they brought up, they kind of ticked off it, lake property owners because they don't have to maintain a similar type of buffer to their shoreline. So anyway, lots and lots of discussions, lots of speakers in that Association of Minnesota Counties meeting back on eighteen. Then on Friday the nineteenth, I attended on a Zoom meeting with a representative from Michelle, Michelle Fishbach. We had, we had a little meeting and Andrew, you were with me there. Uh several of us from Eaker County were in on this Zoom meeting and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to share some of our local concerns, our local goals, are there any issues? And uh Fishbach had a representative conduct the meeting, his name was Cory Becker. Some of the things that we talked about were COVID funding, vaccination progress, uh any relief monies. Disbursements of those relief monies. We talked about the election details, the face to face, the machines, the number of voters, et cetera. We talked about the need for broadband, access to it and funding in greater Minnesota. We did bring up the California versus Minnesota emissions issue. And the last thing we talked about was continued need for infrastructure and road improvement. And Andrew, do you have anything to add to that?
No. I do not.
So that would be my committee report. Danny, I think you're next.
Yep. Uh main, uh main committee thing I had is the EDA. And uh our big push was uh dividing out all those monies, the COVID response. And Lisa did a good job in terms of outlining a good uh starting point for what we went and then we adjusted some based on her numbers. And um I thought that went pretty well. It only took about an hour. And we also talked about uh uh lumber one had sold a couple of their houses and I believe we're going to give them another loan of four hundred thousand then to build four more?
Yes, they borrowed six hundred thousand from EDA. They have two houses, one's sold, uh two of them are sold. They're both under construction. I think one's gonna close on March fifteenth, the other one on April first.
Are those, are those in any valley?
No, these are out uh
What they are?
West or east of the Eagles in there somewhere.
Could drive out that way, that's my area.
They they got four projects going and they borrowed them up to six hundred thousand. They've repaid two hundred of that back. That was short term, the two hundred of the six. And then of the four hundred now, on each of these two closings, they're gonna pay back seventy five thousand on each house at closing. So that'll bring it down another hundred and fifty. And then they're proposing to um do another four house project, so we'll give them another four hundred.
So are they like uh moderately priced or?
Uh, at, and there's, and I might not get this quite right, Danny, so um there was gap, there was gap financing provided by EDA. And because of I, my theory on it, I guess, then, well, Lisa thought too, was that because of the low, low interest rate now that right now these um, these buyers are not needing the gap financing. So actually, that's why we're getting seventy five thousand dollars back per house when they close on these first two, so it's actually been working better than expected that way from an EDA standpoint, so.
I believe it's the only thing the EDA has really going, right?
Right now, and that, I know, they have, between CARES Act and now the state roundhouse, that's kind of been what.
Four more?
Four more.
This summer?
Uh timeline, I didn't.
Exact timeline, I don't believe, but is there twelve lots there or is there?
I think there's sixteen total, but there is a couple houses.
Already there.
There.
See that development get finished up.
Yeah. That was our main thing on the committee. Now, uh is there anything to to bring up noncommittee things that I've talked with? Or is that really not the the time and place?
It depends, are you looking for action on something?
No, I I am looking for maybe future input of like maybe a work session again. It's um, I've had a lot of discussions with Greg in terms of some of these solar farms. I guess there's a a big push and one in Dassel. And it's right on the Dassel, basically, it's not land that was annexed by Dassel, but it's right there where they would have possible building going on, you know, for expansion. And he's talking about, you know, I was, cause I was telling him, you know, they have the bonding thing and of course, you'll never pay. The county ever got it, there'd never be enough money for the bonding and stuff. Whether we should change the amount for bonding in terms of these solar farms that were put up and then maybe having some sort of distance from other adjacent landowners to put in place. You know, more of a, somewhat of a deterrent, you know, cause they are, you know, if you are a landowner and if you had a house, they are kind of an eyesore, you know, but then you also have to play the the game of, you know, it's their property too. These people who rent them out, so.
It seems to me, Danny, they have to pay it or uh submit a twenty five thousand dollar bond for reclamation after they're taken out, correct?
Yeah, the county would have that and, but the thing about it is, and I believe Sterns moved it up to like a hundred and fifty thousand for their bonding, but it only goes in play if the landowner actually defaults on the land. So the county really isn't in play unless the landowner would default on that ownership of the land, which uh how how many?
The landowner is basically on the hook if it's for the reclaim.
Yep, unless they abandoned it, which wouldn't usually happen, so it's not as much of a deterrent, you know. Cause I I believe you mentioned once earlier, I think it was in December, about how those bond numbers are so low and it's no way they're gonna you're never gonna reclaim what they have.
You can't, you're gonna be stuck with them.
Right.
The reason they, and my understanding to that was, yeah, that it's a low amount, but in essence, the way the the permit is listed, the landowner is the one who needs to worry about the recomma- the the decommissioning.
Except for if they're broke and they don't. You know how this is gonna end up like anything else. It's like, well, when we end up with a building on Main Street, cause you know, eventually it's it's gotta be handled.
Well, what I'm getting at is landowners first in line and the county is second.
What if they don't do it? Then who's second?
That, then the county, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm thinking we should be proposing that we raise that up.
Yeah.
That bond number up, cause that's a twenty five thousand, I think, I think it's something that, it's way too low.
It's thirty, I think.
Yeah.
We always used to have that discussion that it probably wasn't enough.
See, the real issue is we haven't gotten to the end of life on any of these things. You have to see how they are gonna be handled at that twenty five year point. Because what's the oldest solar garden around here? Ten years? So.
Mm, yeah, may, maybe.
Will really happen when we hit that twenty five year mark. But that would just be a simple ordinance change from the planning and zoning.
Does it have to come from the planning and zoning?
That's what I didn't know. Does it have to come through us or the planning and zoning?
It's gonna be planning and zoning on in the solar ordinance.
They do that every year.
Okay.
They change their ordinances every year, so if you have a suggestion, you can talk to them about that, cause they add.
I already, I already had a hard suggestion, it's like the bond numbers too low. Because I think then the solar company has to play like maybe a insurance amount proportion to how much that bonding is. I think is how it works, but it's not, it's minimum, you know, if you went from.
I was gonna say, to go to it from thirty to a hundred and fifty, as far as the project itself, I don't like it adds.
Much.
Any, or nothing significant to the end.
It's a nice safety net for the county, just to know that, why won't you? And then the also, there's uh something there in terms of, you know, where these solar farms can go if they're adjacent to other landowners. I'm, I would be in favor of having them a little further away, because if you had a house, you know, what, and you overlooked that? I mean, geez, what would that do to your property value?
That's another ordinance change. Now, we haven't worked, we haven't changed any ordinances in two years. So I think the last time we did an ordinance review and planning and zoning was when Kristen was here. That was the last time, yes.
I know they used to look at them every year and they'd bring changes to the board.
And the only reason I brought this up is because of that one place in Dassel. And that kind of got the, my wheels working. And then I know, I think, is it McLeod are getting sued, cause they have a real tight in terms of rejection of these solar, and they're getting like three lawsuits based on, because. So if the planning and zoning starts rejecting these and we're in for lawsuits, but then you wanna protect people who, you know, I mean, I don't know what it does to the property values.
Um, maybe I'm going down a rabbit trail, but Dassel, is that property not surrounded by city property?
Yeah.
How did they do that?
I don't know.
I mean, it's my, I mean, somebody dropped the ball there, I mean.
I kind of thought so, but then it's just like.
Now it kind of puts it on us.
Exactly.
I mean, on the county to be.
Cause they have to get permission.
A hole in your.
And they have to get permission from the landlord to annex it into Dassel. And the landlord is the one that's actually putting the requisition into getting the solar farm there. It's, it's very messy and I was just like, oh my gosh, this is.
Couldn't Dassel use the right of eminent domain and annex it?
I think that, I think the teeth come from Dassel, not from the county. And this, that's the way I was, the little bit I heard, I thought was my first inclination was the city needs to.
Yeah, I don't like every.
I hate that word.
That eminent domain, that means like something's getting shoved down.
Those are like fighting words, ready by old as land, but that's why I was like, that's, but they should have, I don't know.
This wouldn't be eminent domain, because it's not, they're not actually purchasing the property.
Right.
Eminent domain is through, it's a purchase process.
Takes.
But, um, it would be an annexation process to pull it into the city. There's, I don't, there's a variety of things that go into that, but. Uh, it, has this board typically in the past ever made referrals to the planning commission to take a look at a specific issue?
Yes, when we look at it, I had one a few years ago, I asked them to look at it and they did. And then you're free to attend when they have their, and then they bring them back for us to approve.
So what I would suggest then is if this is an issue that, that the board is interested in, we could, um. Uh, maybe at our next meeting, have a, a formal, a vote to have a formal referral of this issue with, and then with some guidelines of what that issue. What we want them to take a look at and ask planning and zoning to do that and.
Yeah, I never remember it coming through the board, but I just went and talked to Kristen at the time and I said, what do you got on this? And then it's brought up when they're doing the policy or the changes and then there's a discussion.
Yeah.
And the public can come in and say what they think or whatever, so I don't think it has to be, I mean, I'm sure it can be, but I don't think it has to be a formal request from us.
So one issue could be, um, if there's, we, there's a pending application out there that could be impacted. Then we may need to do a red flag resolution to notify property owners that we're not accepting, we're doing a moratorium on all applications related to this. Because we're looking at our rules. Um, I'll talk with Brandy about that and see.
Do that and then, because everyone in the end comes before us anyway and we very seldom turn anything down, but we can, we have more power, so.
Right.
I don't recall doing it, but.
Well, and as far as the bond goes, like in Eden Valley, because we sit on the county line. There's two solar farms going in on Sterns County side of the line and if they're a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond. The same company's putting in solar farms on both sides of the line and on the south side of the line, you're paying a thirty thousand dollar bond. So what I'm getting at is you're putting two in Sterns, you know, and one in Meeker and we're requesting a smaller bond, so.
I think Sterns is about the highest there is out there after looking, but it's thirties.
So it's not a deterrent is what it's.
Not much.
No, it's a minimal.
But it, it would be a nice safety net, just because if, you know, we were holding the bag.
Then it would be, then it's a why not question, why are we not?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I mean, that's why.
But there, there was a series of this going around and then I know Wright County's doing something too with the, you know.
They have a moratorium currently, so that's part of what we've been looking.
So they have a moratorium till they redo the regulation of the.
I believe, I believe that's what.
But I don't know, maybe going, I, I just assume there's gonna be more of these popping up with the new administration being what they are. To be politically correct, um, I'm not gonna go into that. But, uh, you know, so I don't know how to go about it in terms of us as a county board, but I thought it should be brought up. Maybe being a little more proactive, because I think there's gonna be more of this stuff coming down the pike.
I'm sure that's gonna, putting that in is gonna be rewarded. I agree with you. So there probably will be more, so it is something to talk about till we really decide what we're doing. Maybe we should talk about a moratorium.
I know at the committee meetings, planning and zoning, you will get people who will come or residents from the surround, cause they all get notified.
Yep.
Uh, you, you almost, we almost always had them for windmills. Very seldom on a solar garden. But that doesn't mean the issue isn't there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that's how the attendance.
Think that, they feel like the windmills are more of an eyesore maybe, I don't know.
Well, they're taller, you see them more, you know, you almost gotta be on top of a.
The ordinances, you know, they require tree buffers and stuff on solar, you know, visual buffers for solar farms, you know. So that you can't bow to a windmill, so.
Right. But I thought something that might be pertinent.
Yeah.
You know, to be a little more proactive about it, you know. I do feel like there's gonna be more of that kind of stuff coming up and.
I agree.
It's not my, it's not my cup of tea in terms of what they do.
So I will work with, um, Greg and Brandy to determine what the next best step is, whether it's a discussion with the board here. Whether it's a, um, just asking the planning commission to take a look at it.
Okay.
We'll come up with that plan and I'll, I'll follow up with an email.
Just as a, has a, it does take time, because they meet once a month. You have to have a public, you have to have public notice, then a public, open public meeting for comment, so forth, so. Um, if that's something that you're interested in, in doing, you know, you really do have to get it going, cause it could be six months to get it through.
I don't know if we need to go through them to do a moratorium, I think that kind, we're the, we're the last.
Well, e- exactly.
We can stop anything coming out of there, we, we're the last vote on it.
Yep, but that, that's the, um, the piece that I wanna talk with Brandy and Greg about is what's the process? All of this, cause way I've seen it done in the past is that you, you do that red flag resolution upfront where you have a moratorium. But it lasts for a certain period of time and then the planning commission goes through their process, does their public hearing, comes back with their recommendation. And then the board would adopt the word.
Sure.
Okay, good.
That's how I had.
All right, uh, AMC was on public safety, um, we had a long discussion about mutual aid funding. Um, this coming out of metro counties, they wanna set up a special fund that everybody, every county would pay into to develop. Uh, for mutual aid, so if you had a large event in your area, that you could draw from this fund to help pay for emergency services. Uh, kind of like a disaster relief, um. The, the discussion basically ended up circling around back to that, um. Rural counties already do this. We do that, we have mutual aid agreements, um. We always rely on our resources around us to help us with events, no matter what size. Um, the concern stemmed back to that, it'll be something that the metro counties will use. The funds and that the rural counties will just donate to, so, um, we made that point pretty clear. Um, the, the metro county seem to be under the understanding that, uh. That there is no mutual aid agreements and we said, I think that the rural or the metro counties need to get together and develop their own mutual aid agreement. And their own mutual aid packs and, uh, create their own fund and they can draw from that. But we basically as rural counties weren't very interested in that. Um, that was on AMC, then at Grove City Care. Um, everything is, uh, going along pretty good over there, getting a lot of their residents are vaccinated, it's el- elderly. Um, that are residents there, um, but overall they've been very lucky with COVID and, and most of them are getting vaccinated now, so. Think they're starting to open up over there, um. Uh, then on the twenty fourth, uh, the city Eden Valley and the townships, four townships, five townships up there. That fire and rescue serves, uh, we had an annual meeting and, uh, basically discussed funding. And, and the, the township agreements with fire and rescue and the assessments, uh, Eden Valley is going. Is, uh, requesting to buy a new tanker truck that they're gonna start, uh, putting together here. Uh, for the next year, it'll take about a year to get, they figure, so they're, they got approval to start working on that. And then we had the E D A, which, um, we talked about that already. Um, one thing I was gonna bring up too, and Beth kind of touched on that, I, I do wanna be careful. Um, when we talk about the second amendment, um, issues and, uh, this other letter that we got. Uh, that if we develop a, a resolution such as Sterns did that. We make, I wanna be clear that the public has a right to bring things forward to us and that it, it needs to be heard and at least. Um, given consideration and, and, uh, answered.
I agree.
I, I don't wanna pass a resolution that makes it sound like we won't hear the public. Um, via their written requests. I, I got the letters, well, as many of the other, oh, I think all of us.
Can I ask you, why is he sending that? Is he not aware we already have a resolution or like?
Well, I've gotten, like, I've got an email the other day. Um, I've had three phone calls saying, when are you guys gonna do this? And I'm like, we, do we did this?
I was gonna reply, say we already did it, but I didn't reply, cause I wasn't sure.
I sent them the resolution, I sent them.
So they know that we already have one.
But I don't know where it's coming from, cause I've received several phone calls on it and, uh.
Somebody in your.
So I, I. Well, one.
I'm kidding.
One, one is not, for sure, and then I got another letter here too, but I, and I respond to it.
So are you getting them and not the rest of us?
I got a, I think.
I got one, but, but I just.
Southern Minnesota, I think.
If I don't understand is if you go on our local second amendment site, it shows we passed the resolution.
Yeah.
They've got it on there.
Maybe.
Yeah, well, it was, uh, I'm tr- and I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of, uh, was it Minnesota Gun Rights Coalition that was here? Somebody presented.
The way we did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't.
I mean, they came and presented to us and, and they had it on social media, so I don't know where the disconnect is and the, or where it's coming from that we're not.
Can you explain to me then, what's the difference between the resolution and what the actual law is in terms of what you can do as a county? I mean, I, I don't understand, you know, some of the stuff that they wrote, I'm like, don't we have those rights already?
That, that, and that's.
What are we, what are we designing?
I think the one thing they were trying to do is if. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. They wanna ensure that when they come to get everyone's guns, that the sheriff is not gonna enforce it, basically is what it amounts to. But we cannot, as Brandy explained, and she went over this when we passed it, and then they did some more work on it, so I think we have a good resolution. If, if she's ordered, if Brandy has ordered, like they wanted us to say we wouldn't use any money. Uh, federal person, taxpayer money.
County.
County money to help in that endeavor of, well, we couldn't, we didn't have that in there.
The, the sheriff.
Goes too far the other way.
The sheriff, the sheriff and the county attorney are bound by state statute to follow the law. And we as a board of commissioners cannot order our sheriff and county attorney not to follow state law.
They have.
So that's the caveat, I mean, we can't.
On the other hand.
I can't order you to break the law.
But, but at the debate, some elected officials will tell you. If they ordered me to do that, I wouldn't do it. And some of this is just political stuff that's going on, that goes on every four years and. But we did pass the, we passed it and we did it unanimously.
It, they came in, they presented and there was some language in their proposed resolution that was not gonna work. And, and Brandy looked at that and, and, uh, basically told them, you know, here's some things that we can't do. And advised us as a board, that's why we have her. And, um, and they came back, so what it comes down to, and then, uh, we also had Representative Verdell and Newman sent letters to us as a board to adopt it. Um, with the changes, with changes to it, so. To answer Danny's question, there isn't much difference between the, the second amendment rights on a federal level and exactly what.
Well, the only reason why, I believe in all this, you know, your, your rights and stuff, but sometimes I think if you bring too much to it. You know, then people are actually gonna poke in like all these COVID restrictions, you know. I think someone wrote a letter and it's like, well, okay, if you kind of police yourself to cer- certain degree, you know. Depending on what kind of county you are, it kind of, we kind of take care of some of these things and they're a natural process, you know. As COVID numbers go down, things are naturally, you know, easing, if you will, you know, I mean, there's still. I, but I don't know how to, I'm just.
Is, you know, when you have, uh, uh, somebody that's running for president saying, I'm gonna break the NRA, and he did that, I heard him say it. And I'm not getting political here, but it's all about politics when it's some of this and they're threatening to tax ammo really high. And limiting the ammo you can have and there's things that are causing this and it isn't just our citizens. It's being caused by what they're hearing and I understand that and I think we're, that's why I say. I'm here for a reason and I agree with, uh, Steve, I will never back down from a decision we have to make. That's just, and some of this is political rhetoric, but some of it.
I, I was just, my whole thing is, I just wanted to know how much actual power we have over these issues.
Well, not as, right, I know what you're asking.
By the time, by the time we make them legal, not, it's a watered down version of support. Is what it comes, I mean, it's support for, uh, a philosophy, but as far as teeth in a law. We, we, we can't change state law, so I mean. We can support our citizens.
Yeah, I think they'd have a real struggle if they knocked on your door and said, do you have any guns? I'd like to have them, so, you know, I mean.
I mean, that's.
Exactly.
I'm just saying.
And that isn't, I mean, that's just not gonna happen, otherwise you'd be, you'd think people were mad.
Exactly.
Last.
And I, and I know last year on the sheriff, when they came out with, you needed a letter in your glove box. You know, and initially when they started and the sheriff crew said, I, we are not pulling over everybody to check.
Exactly.
I mean, you're just, there's things we're not.
That's what I'm saying is like, I, I understand all that, ma- maybe they, maybe we do, should do that as a, just to show what we stand for. But there's a part of me too that says, okay, we're a pretty conservative county, we kinda, you know. We kinda follow the own, kind of what our county roots are anyway. And if you bring, you know, people, more people from the city. Uh, looking at us and then actually it might actually cause more harm to us than good.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know who this group is, because we've already passed the amendment, other counties.
I'm not just saying about that group, I just mean in general.
That's the only one I've ever had the public come and wanna pass, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think the reason that other counties have, have taken this up and then I did just get notified that Candy Ojai did approve the, the resolution today. And I think the reason is, is kind of what happens when there's an issue that comes forward that everyone doesn't, you know, on the face of it, agree on. Or it is a controversial, you know, national issue that, um, you know, we have people in the community who feel one way. We have other people who feel another way and we pack the boardroom with folks who are arguing about something that isn't really the county's business. And I think that's the reason that a lot of these counties have taken this on. Um, have taken, have taken the stance that we're not going to take a stance, basically is what they're saying. So i- certainly it's, it's your all's decision of what you would like to do with these sorts of things, but, um.
But I think, Andrew, we have an obligation then to tell them this board is not gonna take that up. They get to be heard, citizens in this county have a right to be heard, that's how I feel about it. And if we say, you know what, I feel your pain, I even agree with you, but there's nothing we can do to change that, then that's okay, I'm willing to do that. But I'm not willing just to say, we're not ever gonna hear any of this stuff and then, when they're trying to get to one of us. We're gonna have somebody at the door saying, no, they're not gonna hear that. I think that's our responsibility to tell them that, do you agree?
I, I think we, just as long as we're clear that they have a, I, I mean, I'm willing to listen.
I am too, I'm, I'm willing to.
But, but I wanna, I just wanna, I don't wanna make it sound like we're cutting anybody from the public off, but.
But you know, in the grand scheme of things, when we get down to the end of the day, it's gonna be what our attorney says. We can, can't do legally. No matter what resolution we pass or don't pass, it's gonna be what the law states.
Oh, we had that, that's why I had to go back for more discussion when we had it, because, and it was solved, it was fine, so.
So we'll, we'll take a, a, a look at the, the language that the other counties are, are using and we'll bring it forward next time. And we'll, we'll continue this discussion at that time.
Yeah, cause it's a lot of, it's actually pretty deep, to be honest, I mean, it's a deep, you know.
And that may be a work session one rather than a board meeting session one too. Just discuss it.
During the campaign and since then, through all these questions.
You scared us, Julie. I thought God was a female for a second, I was like, holy crap, everything I learned in Catholics, Catholic religion, oh my god. What's going on? Sorry to interrupt.
I always told them true things. Has said county commissioners are not affiliated with a political party. We are not Democrat or Republican, we are affiliated with a political party ten. In regard to some of our controversial, debatable topics such as the gun issue. I said, we must follow our constitution. And, and that was always.
Then we did the right thing by signing the pledge.
Yeah, pretty much the end of discussion, but people just want to be heard, but it, it was self-explanatory then after. Yeah, pretty much the end of discussion, but people just want to be heard, but it, it was self-explanatory then after they realized. No party affiliation and we follow the rules of our constitution.
I think sometimes the more we talk about it, the more we rile things up, maybe.
Like with COVID now, things are a little more relaxed, businesses can do things more to normal.
Only at fifty percent.
Yeah, exactly.
I think they're getting much more than fifty percent support though, which is nice, you know, I mean, the, the public is. As much, you know, what I'm seeing locally, that everybody's responding to the businesses.
People are smarter than you think.
Very good to try, but, but the problem is you gotta have so much to operate and that's just. I agree with you.
So I, I think based on the discussion for, schedule this for the, the work session or schedule this for?
I think a work session in the future, doesn't have to be the next one necessarily.
Sounds good, we'll, we'll slot it on when there's a little bit of time.
Anybody have anything else they want to bring up from their committee meetings? That was very good discussion, good reports. Lots of, lots of issues. As I move down the agenda, we now hit the category of miscellaneous correspondence and we have some. Uh, vacancies on various boards, what, what do we need to do about that, Andrew?
Nothing at time, this is, nothing at this time, this is just to keep it on your radar, in case you happen to know someone who might fit into these spots, they're being published on our website. Corey, have we gotten any applications for these?
I haven't seen any, no, and you'll all get them if they come in.
So we're, it's out there.
Oh, we had received something from, um, the Middle Fork Crow River watershed district. From a Jay Hetkey.
Yes, so the, that, um, that opening had some very specific requirements for publication and, and. Our block was taking care of that on our.
Okay, um, and then the AIS board and the public health advisory board, but we don't need to take action on that today, am I correct? Is there anything else that needs to come before the board today?
A motion to adjourn perhaps?
I'll second Madam Chair.
I, I would entertain a motion, did you make a motion, Paul?
Yes, I did.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn our meeting, all those who, oh, that I have a roll call, Corey, are you still?
I am, Commissioner Ober. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Schiefelbein. Commissioner Schmidt.
Very good, the meeting has come to an adjournment, wonderful.
Enjoy Florida. Yeah, she talked about the.
We're just gonna meet right here, quick, okay.
Holy buckets, I'm gonna have to schedule a break.
So struggling with my decision not to have the paper stuff, because I've made so many notes on that before the meeting. So I'm, I'm staying where I'm at, but I, but I may change and go back to the.
Andrew, Andrew, may I leave the meeting?
Yes, you may.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the button.
I got back to him when we were gonna have a meeting for the security, didn't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still waiting to hear.